Give Laura another half hour.
I'm going to hit the record button as well.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. So, since we're six feet apart, can we keep our masks down like this?
Oh, right. We are ready when you are.
Okay, I will call to order the Monday, June 22nd, meeting of the Oregon City Planning Commission. First item on our agenda is public comment on any items that are not on our agenda this evening. Are there any public comments?
There or not.
Okay. Then we will move on to item three, which is public hearings, and everybody gets to listen to me read the script again. Two public hearings on land use applications are scheduled tonight. Our role is to conduct a public hearing and to make decisions about the matters before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the commissioners whether they have any potential conflicts, such as family, financial, or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. I will also ask whether either commissioners have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. Any member of the audience may question any commissioner about their disclosures. The staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. Staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. A quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. Hearing procedure steps are shown in the chart on the wall in the meeting room. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out and put your address on the card so the city can notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin off testimony stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in record. Written material submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony could be placed in the record. Copies must be submitted to city staff while the record is open. They are not given to staff; they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised on the record for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising an issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the city commission or the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designated need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. So, before I open the first public hearing, again, we'll just, we'll do basically what we did last time. We'll hold our questions until the end of each presentation, and when we went in alphabetical order last time, we'll go reverse alphabetical order this time, to be fair, to give you each a chance to ask your questions or ask for clarifications or whatever. Okay, so, we will now open the public hearing for Oregon City File Number GLUA-20-00015, Fernwood Apartments Sign Variants. And we will ask first if any commissioners have any conflict of interest or ex parte contacts or site visit, starting with Commissioner Staggs.
I have no ex parte contact. I drive by the site when I get the basis, but I've not specifically, um, not specifically been to the site to examine it for this, for this hearing.
And no conflict of interest? Okay, Commissioner Schlagenhoffer.
Um, no conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact, and I did drive by and I, I looked at the different sign locations.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson.
No ex parte contact, no site visit specifically, but I go by that place, but I find him so weak, so I pretty well knew what it was, and no conflict of interest.
Okay, and I have no conflicts of interest, no ex parte contacts, and I did visit the site. Does any member of the audience wish to question any of the commissioners on their disclosures we've made?
Didn't ask me, but okay.
What?
You didn't?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Guile, I'm sorry.
I'm last on the list and I'm not cared about.
Well, you were first last time.
I know. No ex parte, no conflict of interest, but I did drive by that site multiple times because on this Planning Commission, we've discussed that intersection area there several times, so I wanted to really get a good view of it, so I, in and out, all those, there are entrance, exits all around, so I had a good view of what's going on.
Okay. So, once again, any member of the audience wish to question any of the commissioners on their disclosures?
Not seeing any here at City Hall.
Okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to the staff report. Ms. Vasileva.
Thank you. I'm Deliana Vasileva, and I'll be presenting the staff report for the Fernwood Apartments Sign Variants' applications. The subject site is located on the corner of Warner Parrot Road and Central Point Road. It is just under eight acres in size. It is zoned R3.5, which is a medium-density residential zoning district. Surrounding zones to the west are also residential, low-density residential R6, R8, and R10. To the north is institutional zoning, which is the Planning Division Office, and to the east, there is some low-density residential R6 zoning, as well as some mixed-use zoning, mixed-use corridor, and then mixed-use employment further to the east, which is the Clackamas County campus, and to the northeast is some R2 high-density residential zoning. So, the zoning here is important because our sign code is based on zoning districts rather than uses, so the type of zoning that you have dictates the signage that you're allowed. My clicker won't work now. So, because this site has residential zoning, the only type of signage that would be allowed is what you see on the top row there. So, it's signage that you see in a single-family neighborhood, those yard-type signs or for-sale signs. Any of the signage in the bottom two rows is not allowed in this zoning district, so no freestanding signs, no wall signs, no projecting signs, banners, billboards, all of that signage that's typical of commercial or mixed-use zones is not permitted here. So, the applicant has proposed four freestanding signs at the locations identified there because freestanding signs aren't permitted in this zone, variances are required for those signs. The first sign is on the corner of Warner Parrot and Central Point. It is just under 20 square feet in size. The second sign is at the northern driveway. It is...
You're showing the new sign, you're not showing the old signs. Do you mean to do that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, because I thought you were saying that's not the sign that was there. Okay.
Yeah, sorry, this is what is being proposed.
Okay.
This is the second sign, which is at the northern driveway entrance, or which is proposed at the northern driveway entrance.
I broke it. None of us are seeing what you're doing up there.
There we go.
Oh, there it is.
This sign is approximately 10 square feet in size. The third sign is at the middle driveway entrance farther south. It is also 10 square feet in sign, in size, and then the last proposed sign is at the southernmost driveway entrance, and it is also 10 square feet in size. So, again, because freestanding signs aren't permitted in a residential zone, variance for each sign is required. This is the variance criteria. I'll briefly go through each one, and then a couple of them I'll go into a little more detail on.
You know how to change this setting. Sorry, the screen's gone berserk.
That's okay.
Okay, thanks.
Are we good? Okay. This is the sign variance criteria. I'll quickly go, or I'll quickly tell you a little bit more about each criterion, and then a couple of them I'll go into a little bit more detail on. Criterion one is that the variance from the requirements is not likely to cause substantial damage to adjacent properties by reducing light, air, safe access, or other desirable or necessary qualities. The signs are fairly small in size, so they shouldn't cause any damage to any of those desirable qualities that are listed. As with all Type III applications, there is a public comment period, and we, as of now, have not received any comments identifying any issues with these desirable qualities that are listed in this criterion. Criterion number three is granting the variance will equal or exceed the purpose of the regulation to be modified. The purpose of the sign regulations primarily is for aesthetics and to avoid visual clutter. If this property were zoned multifamily, the proposed signage would be permitted outright without any variances, and they could actually have even more signage, so they are exceeding the purpose of the regulations, and they're staying consistent with the sign code for multifamily zones. Criterion number five is no practical alternatives have been identified, which would accomplish the same purpose and not require a variance. Again, because the sign code is so restrictive due to the zoning, there really is no other alternative that would not require a variance. And criterion number six is that the variance conforms to the comprehensive plan and the intent of the ordinance being varied. The proposal is consistent with policies and goals in the comprehensive plan, although we don't have any specifically related to signage. So, criteria number two and four, I'll talk about in a little more detail. Number two is that the request is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship, and number four is that any impacts resulting from the adjustment are mitigated. Aside from the zoning not corresponding with the use, the hardship in this case is the layout of the apartment complex. So, there are three different driveways, but each one provides access to different apartment units within the complex. So, the arrows on this map represent the location of each driveway, and then the stars that correspond with the color of each arrow identify the units that can be accessed from that driveway. So, you have to know which driveway to enter into in order to access the unit that you are looking for. You couldn't enter in on the northern driveway and then drive down to the southern portion of the site. You have to know which driveway to use to get access to the unit that you're looking for. So, for that reason, signage is required at each driveway entrance to guide visitors into the driveway that they need to enter through, depending on what apartment number they're looking for. And as far as the sign on the corner of Warner Parrot and Central Point, which is not at a driveway entrance, this sign also helps visitors navigate this five-way intersection that can be a little bit complicated. That's the intersection of Warner Milne, Leland, Lynn, Warner Parrot, and Central Point. So, if you're coming from Warner Milne, you have to be in the correct lane to either turn left on Leland or continue straight and then take a slight left on Central Point. So, it can be confusing if you haven't driven through it before, so having a sign on the corner would help visitors identify the location of the apartments in advance and give them enough time to get into the correct lane to be able to turn on Central Point. So, they're requesting the minimum to alleviate these hardships. They're not requesting anything above and beyond that, and as far as mitigation, our recommendation is that the benefits of having all these wayfinding signs are enough mitigation to mitigate any potential negative impacts of the signs, so we're not requiring any additional mitigation. If the Planning Commission thinks that that is necessary, you can require it. And with that, we're recommending approval of this application, and I can answer any questions.
Okay, any commission, uh, questions for staff, starting with Commissioner Staggs?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Schlagenhoffer.
I, I do have a question about the size of the numbers on the signs, the address numbers. Do we know how big those are?
Um, I don't off the top of my head. We do have the applicant here, and he works for the sign company, so he might have some idea.
Okay, should we ask him later?
Okay.
Did you answer Dirk's question? Should we ask those questions of the applicant later?
Yes.
Sorry, they are on the plans. It looks like they are five inches in height.
Might be hard to read when you're driving and trying to find the right driveway. It seems like it should be a bigger part of the sign, the numbers. That's the only input I have.
I think that's maybe something that the applicant can expound on a little bit when they make their presentation.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Commissioner Johnson, any questions for staff?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Guile.
Yeah, I have a few. Having been on this Planning Commission for almost eight years now, we've gone over the sign code many times, and there are a lot of questions about that intersection. But on the sign code, we charge each business a fee annually for their signs. Are we charging a fee annually for these four signs to be up, like they would any other business? Because right now, those look pretty commercial, the signs that I've seen. So, I'd like to know, do they get charged a fee every year like all of us other businesses get charged? Because it doesn't seem fair if they don't.
The annual fee is for the A-frame signs in the right-of-way. We also have an annual fee for banners. Sorry, actually, that's not an annual fee. Banners, you can only have up for like a month, so each time you put it up, you pay a fee. But with more permanent signs, like a freestanding sign or a wall sign or something, you would just pay the review fee when it's being installed, and there is no annual fee.
What is the cost of those fees? Is it per sign or per location?
It's per sign, and there is a base fee, which I believe is $191, and then you're also charged 5% of the construction cost of the sign. So, on your sign permit, you would identify the construction cost, and that gets added on, 5% of that gets added on to the base fee.
So, what I'm hearing is that a sign can be put up, one of those, and they only pay that one-time fee of $190, and each store, each store or business has to pay a fee for any A-frame of $60 something dollars every year, so in three years, you've outlasted one of their, their signs at one of these locations. So, how is it fair to a regular business with an A-frame compared to somebody who, who puts up one of the bigger signs? That they only pay the fee once, and they're done, and, and these fees keep going on businesses? I'd like to know.
Just to clarify, there is no fee for A-frames. The fee is only for if you want to place your sign in the right-of-way. So, it's a right-of-way, it's the A-frames only in the right-of-way. So, A-frames on private property, there's no fee at all. There's no base or anything like that.
All right. I can understand that. Next question, because these look very commercial. They look like, when I looked at the one there, and that's why I went out and looked at it, they look like Fred Meyer signs. And I know Fred Meyer and several stores have had to reduce. The sign out front, didn't I see on there that it was eight feet? The width of it, eight feet?
Uh...
The, the one that, that's on the corner? I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but...
The one on the corner, yes, is eight feet.
So, I came in with my measuring tape and measured eight feet to see what that sign would look like, and eight feet is from that corner all the way down to here. That is one huge sign. That is, to me, a very commercial sign, and I'm asking you, because how, it seems like we're doing more variances than we are approvals of things, and how can we approve a variance for that one location for something that's going to be so big that's like a commercial sign?
Well, it would be if they meet the variance criteria.
Right.
Is how you would approve it.
It seems, as I said, we're doing more variances than we are doing regular stuff nowadays. Everybody wants a variance, so the next apartment's going to come in on the bluffs or anywhere and say, "Okay, we want to sign that big too," because they were allowed to sign that big. And again, I'm saying, so they got three signs, four signs, and that one is so big, it just is amazing to me that we approve something that's almost a commercial size.
Well, I would encourage you to review each application individually on its own merits.
I know, we're doing that.
And I would acknowledge that we do a lot of appli...
But that's why I said I measured eight feet.
Most of our applications you don't see, so there have been some sign variances in the last year or two, so I understand where you're coming from, from that. So, I think what Ms. Vasileva is saying is that this sign size meets the sign size for multifamily zone, which is separate than our standards for commercial. For commercial, you can go much, much larger.
Now, I must admit, I don't have any irons in the fire on this one, except for the fact that, that over my seven and a half years here, I know that, that the previous commissioners have looked at these signs, and especially at that intersection, saying it's a busy intersection, and you, you did put the picture up there, and it seems to be something that that big, that lit, that's going to be a, a distraction to people in that intersection. Yes, it might help with them, and I did go in in each of those, those driveways to see, and each of those signs, I noticed you could not get out of, so you had to come back out. Understanding that, but have a sign that's almost a commercial size on a busy intersection where there's so many, much traffic, it just seems to me very distracting. And that's why I'm wondering why a variance for that when we wouldn't probably, yes, we'd take each one individually, but looking at another apartment complex, how many more could come in and say, "Okay, we want one like that on the corners too." I know this is, looking at this individually, but if we keep approving variances like this, and, sorry fellow, my fellow commissioners, but I've sat through seven and a half years of listening to these sign codes and variances and intersections with too much lights and, and signs, and that's why I'm asking these questions right now.
Yeah, good questions. I would encourage you to stick to the approval criteria and know that this variance doesn't bind you to any future variances. I think in this case, the fundamental problem is the zoning doesn't match the use.
Right, and it just seems to me that's a big commercial sign for a zone, that area. I can understand the ones they had there, but right now, there's also banner there. Did they pay a fee for the banner there on the corner like any other business would be required to pay? But a sign that big, that bright out there at that, that intersection, to me, is very distracting, and it, and why, yes, we're looking at it, how it fits the codes, it just seems to me that's a pretty big sign for an area like that, that's R2.5, and it looks like a commercial sign for a business and not an apartment complex. So, sorry, but again, I'm, I, I have no irons in the fire on this one, but it just seemed to me, it struck me as very unusual to have a big sign like that in an intersection where you're going to have the police station also down there and the city hall down there, and now you're going to have this big sign for this apartment right on the corner. So, my concerns. And I guess there's no answer other than they meet the criteria, but to me, that's another variance, a big variance that they're asking for, other than just three signs, a fourth sign, that's huge.
Yeah, the commission, after staff presentation, will be the applicant you can tap with them, but if the commission feels as though the variance criteria aren't met, you can always condition the signs to be small or something like that, or not approve a variance as well.
Well, again, most of you don't understand that, but it's, because you weren't here during this, but we've, so many commissioners have gone over these sign codes and these, and that's why I bring it up to all of you. I'm, I'm sure it'll get approved by all of you, but those are my concerns, because I've sat through these many, many times. Thank you, Mike.
Anything else? Oops, I think we just, may have just frozen. Can, can you guys hear me in City Hall?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, there we go. Okay. I, I, I just have one question. I want to make sure that I understood the staff report right. Each, each one of those signs, if this was a multifamily zone, each one of those signs is smaller than what would be allowed, and the total number of signs is smaller than what would be allowed if this was a multifamily zone. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have anything else. If there's nothing else from, for questions for staff, we'll move on to presentation from the applicant. You have up to 15 minutes, and please start by identifying yourself by name and your city of residence.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hello. Yeah, my name's Todd. I'm with Ramsey Signs, and my city of residence is Portland.
And give your last name on the record, please.
It's Mros, M-R-O-S.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't actually have much of a presentation. I, I wanted to address one concern that I'd just heard about the size and brightness. The sign is, all sign, all of these signs are non-illuminated. They, they may have a ground light shining up, if that's allowed, but there's no lights coming out of the signs, and they are, as, as you guys know now, smaller than what is allowed in a multifamily residential zone. We, we would not have gone with four signs either, except with the difficulty of locating specific apartments with the inside of their property not connecting. No one could get from one area to another internally, so they'd have to know where to turn in. We, we took a lot of time with the sign, design, and it's, you know, aesthetic was a huge concern, and these aren't inexpensive signs, they're just really detailed. I, I hope that helps. We did consider a lot of things, and we worked with Deliana for quite a while on this, and put a lot into it, to, to do something tasteful. I know that intersection has, has got some changes coming. Eight feet from a sign, from a sign company's stamping is probably really different from, you know, somebody who lives in the neighborhood sees an apartment sign, but it sounds huge, and when you're right up to a sign, it, it can look pretty big too, but in context, it, it shouldn't be, this shouldn't be some monstrosity. I, I hope that helps away some fears. Again, with non-illuminated signage, it, it's, it should be pretty, it should sit in the property appropriately, especially with, with once the landscaping is in, and these guys do a great job with landscaping. Do you guys have any questions?
Hey, anything, questions for the applicant, starting with Commissioner Staggs?
Yeah, I've got a question. Has the, have you guys considered the idea of one larger sign and three smaller ones that have the numbers of those units in that particular area as a possible alternative, which would cost less and maybe achieve the same thing you're trying to accomplish?
Do you mean place the smaller signs next to the larger corner sign?
Um, I think we have four, sort of, we have four signs, right? Um, I think we have four sort of, we have four signs, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, my, my thought was, have you considered the possibility of, uh, keeping four signs, but maybe one of them on the corner, perhaps, number one, the number one location is the larger sign, and then the other three are smaller and have just the numbers of those units as a way to minimize the, the signage and actually save the owner some money and achieve the same goal?
Yeah, yeah. If you look, if you look, do you have the sign design drawing nearby? If you look at that on page seven, you can see, um, all four signs together on one page. Uh, the other signs, um, are actually, uh, smaller signs, you know, and, and the apartments, they want to be seen, of course. Um, we did go smaller than we were allowed because we wanted to stay tasteful, but we also had to, we wanted to keep a continuity, and we wanted it to be visible, and we wanted the, uh, address numbers to be pretty clear and consistent location below the sign panels, where if you're looking for it, you see one sign and a, and you're in some kind of an emergency situation, you know that that's not part of it. You go to the next one, you know where to look. It, it was a balance for us that we tried to do tastefully.
Yeah. No, I see now. This is, I hadn't seen the, um, all of them put together on one, in one sheet. So, that, that clears it up for me, actually, I think. Um, and those are five feet tall and about, how wide are they roughly?
Uh, they're roughly, geez, I just had that number on, um, fifty, fifty-five inches? Fifty-five for fifty-six inches wide. That's the widest, that's the sign faces.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see fifty-six inches, uh, right? Okay.
Five feet wide.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that clears up my question. Thank you.
Okay.
No problem.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Um, yeah, it's, it's pretty much the same question as before. Um, looking at the four signs on that one sheet, they look, the numbers look very clear, but then the rendering where it's, uh, like a, like a computer-generated image of how it's going to look in front of the building, the number size underwhelms. And by the time you pull into those driveways, if you're halfway in before you can read the number, it's too late. You're going to have to turn around in someone's driveway. So, I, five inches just doesn't seem real big. Uh, I just, I hope, I don't know if we can require a certain size number, but I would hope that, uh, you guys would, you know, reconsider the size and maybe, you know, make sure they're, they're good and legible from a distance when people need to be able to read them.
I can respond to that one real quick. If that's okay, I might jump in. Um, in the state of Oregon, we're content neutral, so we aren't going to regulate what the sign says or how big the lettering is on the sign. We're just going to regulate placement size, number, um, the height, those kind of things.
I think he was just making a suggestion.
Yeah, so I, I...
That, that's why I said we cannot require it.
The public is clear.
But we can highly encourage it, that they make it legible and functional. But that's the purpose of the sign anyway.
I am hap- I'm happy to talk with the property owners. It's a, it's an adjustment we can make. It wouldn't cause too much expense. We probably, we would probably, uh, have to increase the depth of the panel on the signs with two lines of the address, just to make the addresses higher. It looks like there's only one. Maybe, uh, increase one a little bit and increase the other one a little bit and leave the one in the middle a little lower to make the letters a little thicker, bulkier, and, uh, more succinct. I don't think that's a problem. I'll talk to the property owner, but I can't promise that ahead of speaking with them.
I understand.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I hate to pile on to the, uh, size and shape and colors and all that, but as I understand it, the, the numbers on those signs are the, that unit of the complex? There's, there's three units in the complex? So, would, would that be, if you go down a driveway, that gets you to the complex number, but you don't get to the house numbers or anything like that on them? That, correct?
Uh, there are three separate driveways, and each driveway provides access to a different set of apartment units.
Right. And, and the, is the building one of those numbers?
Yes.
Okay. And then you can have A, B, C's or whatever else?
Right.
With, with that understanding, I guess I would, I wouldn't register a, a recommendation or anything. I would, uh, accept that. It, the other question is, one of them wants a larger sign, which would normally, I think that was, uh, Mr. Guile, wanted a, a smaller sign, which means it's eight feet, but as you make smaller signs and you put all your graphics on there, the numbers that you're presenting get smaller.
Just on the big, main one was what I was talking about, Vern.
So, it's a, it's...
They were, they were depending on how much we tried to shrink it.
Right, yeah. It, so it's a, it's, it's a catch twenty-two. If you want to be able to read the numbers, you need a, a reasonable size to put them on there so you can identify the different ones. If you want smaller numbers, then you're, you're going the other direction.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, any other questions?
No other questions.
Okay. Commissioner Guile, questions for the applicant?
Okay, could you put those signs back up again? Um, the, the signs. Okay, what I was suggesting, Vern, was not to make all these small, these are five foot, that one up there is eight feet at the top. You only have one number there. Down here, I agree, the, the Fernwood court could have been moved up. I'm not going to tell them content and all that, moved up in those numbers. Are they going to be reflective numbers, or are they just going to be painted numbers?
Uh, they're painted in white paint, so, um...
The older I get, the harder I s- I see signs at night.
Yeah, I get that. Um, Deliana, are we allowed ground lights for these non-illuminated signs?
Uh, yes.
Then we would, we would plus, uh, place ground lights. They would shine up into the sign faces, and they would, of course, also light the, uh, address numbers.
Okay. I, that was just an off-comment because every time I drive around, not so much in Oregon City, we have Portland, all their street signs are fading out, and you can't, don't know where you're at. Um, so when I was...
That's absolutely true.
Like, what street is this? Where am I? Um, this circular, uh, some, um, it looks like a cement structure that I saw today out there. Is that where you're putting the sign in the middle of that?
Not exactly. Uh, that's, that's close to the area, but we learned that we need to actually put the sign slightly off, off of that. That's going to be torn out, and then there'll be new landscaping. Yes.
Because I saw the corner, and I thought, well, you've got a pretty big space there on the corner. That cement area would put it out even closer to the public, but I thought, well, where you have it there back a little bit, wouldn't be so bad. But I thought about that cement round circular, if that was going to be a garden, that would eventually, um, uh, block the view of that sign. But, okay, so you answered that question. Um, I have no more questions, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I just have one, and, and that's in terms of, of placement of the signs, the, the three that are going at the driveways and the one that's, uh, up on the corner. In terms of, um, are, are they placed so that they're not going to be blocking drivers' views, uh, who are trying to make that right turn, um, Warner, what would that be, Warner Millie onto whatever?
Central, central point.
Anyway, and, and at each of the driveways. Uh, has that been taken into consideration? Are we meeting any code that we have concerning, uh, visibility?
Good question.
Do you want me to answer that, Deliana?
Um, I can answer.
Whoever can, whoever's got the answer.
Sure. Um, we do requ- we do have, um, site distance requirements in our code, um, that all sign permits, uh, have to comply with. So, we do review that when we get a sign permit application in, um, regardless of if there's a variance associated with it or not.
And these comply with that without any kind of variance?
We would review it once they submit the sign permit and work with them if it needs to be moved over a little bit or something.
Okay, but that's a part of the permit process after the variance for the sign themselves is approved?
Correct.
Mike, can I have one more question? Mike?
Sure. Go ahead.
The three smaller signs are twin, ten square feet. What's the size of the biggest one?
Uh...
Is it twenty?
That is, um, 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 seventeen point five.
Seventeen point five?
Well, I saw it.
Okay.
Seventeen point five.
Alright, thanks.
Oh, hold on a second. I've got two numbers. I've got, uh, twenty square feet sign area, sorry.
Vern, you ruined it.
Without the graphic, uh, Fern graphic is seventeen point five.
Deliana was right.
Yeah, so, um, I think...
Deliana's right.
Plans that the applicant submitted identify it as just over twenty. Um, but our sign code actually has guidelines about how to measure, um, sign square footage, and it allows you to discount any dead space, and you don't have to count the supporting structure, um, only that portion of the sign that includes writings or a picture that is conveying some message. So, if you only measure that portion, um, it is slightly under twenty square feet, about eighteen or so.
So, the other question I had, Mike, was, um, you said there's no practical alternatives. I can understand maybe the sign out in the front now, but on the sides, why does it have to have the logo and everything else, or why can't it just have the street address and a bigger letters? Why does it have to have all the artwork and everything else when, uh, people know that that's the apartments that they're going to? But what was a practical alternative of having three more big signs instead of just, these are the numbers of the, uh, addresses there? I've lived in a lot of apartments, and usually there's just numbers when you're going into those areas, but not all the artwork on every single sign. So, I'd like to know why that, what the practical alternative, alternative means.
Yeah, I believe that that was important to the property owner, and I think the reasoning was that it's unclear, when you're turning left onto Central Point and you see the big sign, you might think that, uh, the entire apartment complex is accessed from that driveway. Um, so, the name on the following signs, um, you know, signify that those driveways and those units are also part of the same apartment complex.
Well, there's no driveway out near the front, but there is for each of the three. But I thought, just something with numbers on it, this is the point in there rather than all the artwork every single time, because there's three driveways fairly close to each other, uh, not a whole block, but I thought, why not just numbers? Why do we have to have all that signage there? But that, to me, when you said, uh, uh, practical alternatives, I thought that was a, would have been a practical alternative, just to have the address numbers pointed into that section, because they've already got a big sign out front that these are these apartments. To me, the practical alternatives just didn't fit with that.
There, there is concern that, that those are distinct enough, uh, locations, and they're kind of far, uh, for a cohesive apartment, that it could also be missed, that those are part of that, especially if you're coming from the other direction. And, uh, you know, and, and also, you know, we, we did, we did keep it under the amount of area that we, uh, were required to, trying to be, uh, you know, conscious of, of not being super ostentatious or anything, but, uh, that was the, that was the reasoning.
Okay. You just hit on something.
It felt, it felt...
Sorry. You just hit on... You just hit on something. You said, coming from the other direction. Are these two-sided on the three that are going down Central Point Road? Are they two-sided so somebody coming up Central Point Road or down will see that, those same signs? Or do they have to go past them, see, and then turn around and see them again?
Yes, they're double-faced.
Okay, with the same addresses on both sides?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the main sign is just the one face. It faces out at the corner.
Sorry to be so particular, but lots of questions.
No, this is the time to ask.
Any, any other questions for the applicants, from any of the commissioners? Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on. Are there any representatives of any neighborhood associations wishing to speak?
We have nobody at City Hall to speak on this item.
Okay. So, no general public comments either?
Oh, actually, one moment. We do have, uh, someone now. Let's see.
Okay.
Come on up.
Is, is it somebody that's, it's at City Hall, or?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Phyllis Garing is coming up to testify.
Okay. And if you could, uh, please start by stating your name and city of residence, and you have up to three minutes.
And you can take your mask off while you do it, so he can hear you.
Well, that's a good thing. Uh, Phyllis Garing. I live at nine sixteen...
Just your city. You don't need to give your full address.
I live in Oregon City?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, we have a project that wants to be developed in our neighborhood, the old Oregon City Hospital.
Oh, for that item, uh, we'll wait to do that agenda item in just a moment.
This is, this is just regarding that one sign, but you'll be called in just a few minutes.
Did you also want to speak on the sign item?
This was just about the sign that we're talking about.
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll call you back up in a minute.
We don't need a sign.
Okay. Thank you. We'll be sure and call on you when you get to that agenda item. Anyone else? Okay, so that, uh, I, I assume that would eliminate the need for any rebuttal from the applicant, since we didn't hear any testimony. And so, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to comments and deliberation and possible motion from the commissioners. Who wants to go first?
I think I've said all my pieces.
Okay.
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
I think this is a perfect example of, of a kind of, um, variance that, that, uh, makes sense.
Can hardly hear him.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Okay, I, I, I just was saying that I, I think this is a, this is a good example of a variance that makes sense because of the configuration of the development and the position of these homes and the signage, the signage needed to, um, so people can find their way easily. And, uh, I think it's a good example of, of why we would be in favor of a variance like this.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, anything you want to add?
No, not really. Uh, I would, uh, echo if I, if I said much more Chris's comments, so I'll, I'll just be...
Okay. Alright, Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Uh, no, nothing new.
Okay. Commissioner Guile, nothing else?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I would say is, um, I appreciate the fact that, uh, they're under what they would be allowed for this multifamily zone. And, uh, Commissioner Guile, I, I hear you when you were talking about the size of that sign at the front, uh, at the, you know, at the intersection. And I, I guess I'd be a little more worried about it, other than the fact that across the street from that is an institutional zone, across the street the other way is a, is a commercial zone. Uh, that, that sign is not, not plopped in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and I, and I, and I might have more of an objection to an eight-foot-wide sign, uh, i- if it was in a residential neighborhood, but it's really, you know, it's institutional and commercial right across the street. Um, so, uh, that's all I have to say on it. Does anyone have a motion?
I can make a motion.
Motion.
Chris.
Go ahead, Derek.
Go ahead, Chris.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer, go ahead.
Oh.
Okay, I'll, um, I'll make a motion to approve GLUA dash twenty dash zero 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 one five, uh, for the Fernwood sign agenda item, um, with staff conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Move back Commissioner Schlagenhoffer's second, back Commissioner Staggs. Any further discussion? Please call for the vote.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Um, I'm hesitant to say it, but I believe what Chris said is correct. Um, I don't like that sign there. I think there was other alternatives. But I guess I'll, again, I'm not going to live on Diana Swenson. I'm going to vote yes.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving on, item C, uh, item three B, CI dash twenty dash zero 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 one. Code interpretation for dis- discontinuance of illegal nonconforming use. Um, Ms. Turway, has anybody joined the meeting so that I have to read the script again?
Yes.
No, no. Really?
One second. Uh, I could ask, uh, City Attorney Philip Kabizman if it's staff. Does it, does he have to read it again?
We have two people in the audience. Did both people in the audience hear the recitation of, uh, rights adding? Recitation of rights, uh, made by Chairman, uh, Mitchell earlier, or would you like a repeat?
It was all the legal wording.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're fine.
Ask for the agenda or not the agenda, but the documents to be back up here for this? All we have right now is the pictures.
Tap to the site.
Oh, you can tap.
Well, I didn't, um, I didn't, I didn't catch that for sure. Mr. Kabizman, we okay to go ahead?
Yes, you're okay to proceed.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we will, uh, go around the room, uh, conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, uh, or site visit. Commissioner Staggs?
I have no ex parte contact, no conflict of interest. I know where the property is.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
No conflict of interest, no ex parte contact, and I only drove by. I didn't stop. I didn't, didn't look at it in depth.
Commissioner Johnson?
No conflict of interest. Uh, I did drive by and, uh, no ex parte contact.
Okay, Commissioner Guile?
Uh, no times three. No, no, no.
Okay, and for myself, no ex parte contacts, no conflict of interest. I did drive by the site. I've driven by the site multiple times. Does any member of the audience wish to question any of the commissioners on the disclosures that we've just made?
Hearing none.
Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. I will open the public hearing for CI dash twenty dash zero 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 one code interpretation. Ms. Vasileva for the staff report.
Thank you. Uh, this is the staff report for planning file CI twenty oh one, which is a code interpretation for discontinuance of illegal nonconforming use. So the subject site is located on Washington Street between Tenth Street and Eleventh Street. Uh, it is developed with what was originally the Oregon City Hospital, um, built in the nineteen thirties. Um, more recently, it has been converted to, uh, an assisted living facility. My pointer isn't working again. Thank you. Uh, the site is zoned R three point five. Um, in this zone, assisted living facilities require a conditional use permit. Uh, we do not have a conditional use permit on file, which would legitimize the, uh, assisted living facility use. Uh, so for that reason, earlier this year, the applicant went through a legal nonconforming review uh, under Planning File LN twenty oh three to demonstrate that the use, uh, is illegal nonconforming use, which is allowed to continue despite the fact that there is no conditional use permit. Uh, that being said, the use was discontinued in January of this year. Um, and all of the residents were, um, moved out to other facilities. Uh, so the applicant would like to reopen the facility. But prior to that, they're proposing some significant, uh, building renovations, which may take up to thirty months. Um, I'll let the applicant talk more about what is, uh, specifically being proposed. But for, uh, your reference, um, the last time the building underwent any significant renovations was in the nineteen seventies. So, um, you can imagine that there's some work that needs to be done. Uh, so our code provides some guidance for discontinuance of illegal nonconforming use. Um, what our code says is that if a lawful nonconforming use is discontinued for a period of one year, it shall lose its lawful nonconforming status and the use of the property thereafter shall conform with the existing provisions of this title. Uh, if a nonconforming use ceases operations, even if the structure or materials related to the use remain, the use shall be deemed to have been discontinued. Um, so the question that is before you tonight with this code interpretation is, does a building remodel which lasts longer than one year constitute a discontinuance of the legal nonconforming use? Uh, our recommendation or our interpretation of that code is that building renovations, um, are associated with the assisted living facility use. So it's not that the use is discontinuing, the building renovations are being done as part of that use and in order for it to continue. Um, we are recommending that as long as there are active building permits and work is continuing towards the building renovations, that, uh, the use should be considered not discontinued. And discontinuance would only occur if there are no active building permits. Um, and if the building permits expire or aren't active for more than one year, then the property would lose its legal nonconforming status. Um, our recommendation is also that this interpretation applies citywide to any other, uh, legal nonconforming uses that are confirmed legal nonconforming uses where they're, uh, proposing building renovations that may take longer than a year. Um, so again, the question that we're asking of you with this code interpretation is, does a building remodel lasting longer than one year constitute a discontinuance of the legal nonconforming use? Um, if you think the answer to that question is yes, then what that means is that the property would lose its legal nonconforming status if the building is vacant for more than one year, uh, regardless of if there's ongoing construction taking place or not. Uh, if you think the answer is no, then, um, what that means is that active construction would not count against that one year timeline for legal nonconforming uses. Um, and construction lasting longer than one year wouldn't, uh, jeopardize the property's legal nonconforming status and they would be able to continue the assisted, uh, living facility use. Um, so we are recommending that the planning commission approve Planning File CI twenty oh one, um, which again would allow the construction to take longer than a year as long as there are active building permits and active work, um, taking place and that wouldn't impact the property's legal nonconforming status. And I can answer any questions.
Okay, questions for staff, starting with Commissioner Staggs?
Is there any, is there going to be any limit on the timeframe or could this be indefinite? As long as they have permits?
Um, we, in our recommendation, have not placed any limit. The applicant indicated that he thinks it would take approximately thirty months, um, to complete the work. Um, but based on our interpretation, it could be indefinite provided that there's an active building permit during that entire time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to jump out of order a little bit because it's a follow on question. Um, if I understand correctly, active building permits, if you get a building permit, you have to start within a hundred and eighty days and it can't sit, uh, inactive with no, um, activity at all for any longer than a hundred and eighty days. Is that correct?
That's correct. So once the building permit is issued, you have a hundred and eighty days to start the work associated with that permit. Um, if you don't do it within a hundred and eighty days, that permit expires. Um, or also if you do start the work within the hundred and eighty day period, but then you stop and you don't do work for a hundred and eighty days, um, that would also, um, cause the building permit to expire.
Uh, back to Commissioner Staggs' question, uh, there's, there's no, um, overarching, uh, start to finish timeline in our code or, or in our building permit that says you have, you know, three years, five years, ten years, whatever. If, if you keep working continuously and don't break for more than a hundred and eighty days, your building permit stays active. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, um, sorry about that. Uh, Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Yeah, I'd like to add something to that question. Uh, we're talking about the building permit, but usually a building permit is accompanied by a plumbing permit and electrical permit and mechanical permit. Does the building permit have to have activity or could they be working on the plumbing for a hundred and eighty days and no structural work being done? Would that also keep it active?
Yeah, that would also count. So the, um, policy for expiration, um, of a building permit also specifies that any activity on any permit, so a plumbing or mechanical associated with the project will constitute activity for all permits on the project.
Okay, yeah, because a building that big, they could be working on the plumbing for six months and, you know, I'd hate for them to get tripped up with the building permit not having any activity. Okay, that explains my question. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, along the lines of what, uh, determines a, a continuing activity. Now, I know you can probably send a carpenter out there and drive an ale and nobody knows if he's been there or not. Is that tied to, is activity measured by inspections?
Uh, not necessarily. From my conversation with our, uh, building official, he said that any work, any contractor being out there, um, would constitute activity. So you could go more than a hundred and eighty days without an inspection. Um, but that doesn't mean that the permit is dead in the water as long as work has been ongoing, um, during that period.
So is it the word of the contractors? Do they just say, yeah, we were out there last week? Any way to measure, was somebody out there or, uh, do you need to have an inspection to say this work is, a portion is done and it's, and that creates activity to the overall permit that allows you to add that together and you don't meet your, uh, thirty month thing or not, not meet it and then say, whoa, you missed this gap?
Yeah, it's definitely not the inspection. Um, and I think almost any work, it sounded like from my conversation with the building official, any work on site would constitute, um, continuation of that permit.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I'll add something.
Commissioner Guile?
Uh, Mike, are you hold, I see you're sitting down. Are you holding on to the armchairs, the arms on your chair?
I'm leaning on, are, are, are you about to say you don't have any questions?
Believe it or not, I have no questions. I do have a comment though.
I am holding on to the arms of my chair.
You don't fall out anybody here. I do have a comment though, kind of, um, almost comical, but it's really true. Um, I can't believe it's only going to take thirty months for that building. It, it is so old and so decrepit that Rocky and I actually, Commissioner Rocky Smith and I actually talked about turning it into a haunted house for, for years down the road. And we thought nobody would ever fix it up. So if someone's going to do that, more power to them. Darn, we missed a haunted house.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer, did you have something else? Did you raise your hand?
Uh, yeah, I did. I, the only thing I wanted to add was, um, I know we, we probably can't, you know, figure out exactly how long it's going to take for them to remodel the building. But I, I can't imagine anybody paying property taxes or, you know, with the potential of making future, um, income would drag it on as, you know, long as humanly possible. It just seems like they're going to try to get it done as fast as they can. Um, that's just my opinion though.
That does bring up a question, Mike.
Okay.
Is it in an urban renewal area?
I'm holding on to the arms of my chair.
Yeah, is it a part of the McLaughlin neighborhood and do they have any say so in anything that's going on in that building? Hi Patty, um, does the McLaughlin neighborhood have any input as a historical dis- district about that area or that building? I don't know. I'm asking you or, or you or Laura or?
Sure, um, the building is in the McLaughlin Historic District. The building itself is not a designated structure. Um, the applicant did attend, I believe, two, um, neighborhood meetings, um, with the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association to kind of go over their project, um, and the plans for the building. Um, and we did receive a letter from the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association uh, for the legal nonconforming review file, um, that was done before this application. Um, just confirming that the, uh, use is illegal nonconforming use. So, um, the applicant has been in contact with, uh, McLaughlin and they're aware of, um,
And they had no problems?
Not that they have identified.
Mike, or, 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 do you know, is this anywhere close to the downtown urban renewal district? Where the urban renewal funds might help with that?
No, I'm, I believe that there's, that nothing above the bluff is included in the urban renewal district. I, I think that, I think the urban renewal district is only below the bluff.
On the downtown area, okay. Just wondered.
Yeah.
Wasn't a question.
No, no.
Just wondering.
I have a follow up question.
Fern has a question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Johnson?
Um, along, uh,
Me?
Schlagenhoff's.
Oh.
Comments. He, he painted the picture that, you know, anybody in construction is not going to intentionally draw that thing out, you know? And I agree with that. But what happens if a COVID number two comes along and we get building restrictions from the state? Will that hold the, uh, spot for him that he's not going to lose his, uh, nonconforming use?
Because you can't work on it.
Because you can't work on it for a year, a year and a half or whatever. It's hard to believe it'll be that long or would be, but something like that, could it delay?
Um, I'm guessing that if that happened, we would come up with, where no one could do any work. We would come up with some sort of policy to make sure people's permits aren't expiring, um, because that would be out of their control.
Sure.
Um, so I don't think that that would cause the permits to expire.
Okay, I, I'm happy.
I have a question, Mike.
Yes, Commissioner Staggs?
Is it correct that none of the, that all the improvements are on the interior and there are no exterior improvement, improvements?
Um, we haven't received any building permits for anything. Um, that is my understanding is that there, um, the work that's being proposed are just interior tenant improvements. Um, potentially if they wanted to, uh, make minor exterior modifications, um, they could do that through a type one site plan and design review process. Like if they're replacing doors or windows or re-roofing, um, things like that, we can do through an over the counter process.
Mm-hmm, okay, thanks.
Okay.
One other question, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gates?
Yes, I did, Mike. Only, only because I wanted to clarify something. We have two people in the audience. Is, is it true what you said? They've ceased operations? Is there nobody living there now? Or do they still have tenants there right now?
I don't believe there are any tenants there.
I guess we'll find out when the individuals come up to testify. Thanks.
Yeah, we can have the applicant answer that question. Commissioner Gates, did you have any questions for staff on that? Thanks for being here.
Um, I, I don't think I have questions in particular. I was just thinking if it really took that long for them to do the, um, construction that they needed to do. Um, and that goes past a year period of time. Um, that I, I felt the clock should probably start when they're done with the construction, but I don't know, um, but I don't know if city code has to be rewritten or something changed for that to be able to happen.
That is kind of the question that's before you today is when should that clock start? Our recommendation was that that one year clock should start when a building permit, if and when a building permit expires.
Expires or issued?
Expires.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, then we'll move on and we'll, Commissioner Schlegenhoffer.
Just tidying up with Deliana. If you get the final inspection, would that be the expiration of the building permit? The occupancy permit?
That would close out the building permit.
Is that when the clock would start?
Right, so then at that, well, at that point presumably they would have tenants moving in or residents moving in. So that would continue the use. If they got all their building permits and the building sat vacant for a year, then yes, I think that would constitute a discontinuance of the use for more than one year.
Okay.
And just to clarify, it's not necessarily the last date of inspection. If there's an occupancy, it would be when the occupancy permit associated with that permit got issued, which may be a couple of days later or a day later.
Okay, all right.
All right, we'll hear from the applicant. You have up to 15 minutes. And please start by introducing yourself by name and your city of residence.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Nile Hagan. I'm a resident of Portland, although just on the border of Milwaukee. Thank you, Deliana, for your presentation. And we would like to ask the commission to agree with Deliana's recommendation that we're allowed to extensively remodel the facility. As a couple of you mentioned, it is in tremendous disrepair at the moment. Regarding Mr. Staggs or Commissioner Staggs' question, certainly the roof will need to be repaired. Certainly, we'd like to replace windows. We have a question about the stucco on the exterior, whether or not it will hold up. But the primary focus would be on remodeling the interior to allow us to maximize space and room count for residents. So basically, create a much higher quality facility on site. And Deliana, if you would skip to the end here of this study, the last three pages are very basic architectural drawings. At the moment, the building has double loaded corridors and it's a completely different configuration than this. So it would be an extensive process. Regarding the timeline, we asked for 30 months because I think, we hope it goes above and beyond the length of time we'll need. Without COVID and without any other issues, we certainly hope it would be 15 to 18 months. But we wanted to ask for some extra time because of the instability. So with that, I think I'm happy to cede my time. I thank you very much for hearing us and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for the applicant starting with Commissioner Staggs?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Schlegenhoffer.
Uh, no, no questions.
Commissioner Johnson.
Three in a row, no.
No questions.
Commissioner Gile.
I could go four in a row, but I just want to know what the A L on the studios means. On the map.
Oh, assist.
Oh, assisted delivery, okay.
Yeah.
No other questions.
Okay, Commissioner Gage.
No further questions.
I'm going to break the string. I have one. The 30 months, is that written in the conditions? This may actually be, maybe a question for Ms. Basaleva. Where did that, where did that 30 months come from?
That came from the applicant's submittal as far as an estimate for how long the work would take. We don't have a condition limiting the amount of time. As long as they have active building permits, it could go on longer than 30 months.
Okay, so that was just, they put that in there for our information, but it doesn't have any legal attachment to it?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment. Are there any representatives of any recognized neighborhood association?
There is not. There's only two members of the public here.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Please come forward and introduce yourself with your name and your city of residence. And you have up to three minutes.
And please remember to speak close to the mic if you can.
You can pull the mic closer to you, too.
My name is Phyllis Garing and I live at 916 Center Street, Oregon City, which is right within half a block of the old Oregon City Hospital. We have, and I'm a member of the McLaughlin Association, too. We have heard lots of plans for this remodel of the hospital and each time they, somebody takes over, it goes downhill. And right now, the building, I don't think it could pass any kind of a building test to have people in it. But to have 50 people in there seems like it's impossible without any tremendous modifications of the old building. We've, we would like to have something that would be compatible with the neighborhood. Their children and lots of walking around the area and tourists and things. And it would be nice if it was either removed or remodeled to the standards we've been told in the past, but it never works out that way. It's just, the last couple owners have not put a penny in it and it's just really run downhill. So that would be the neighborhood's concern to have either to remove it or
remodel.
Do some very major reconstruction, I should say.
Mike, am I allowed to ask her a question?
Sure.
Did you go to the McLaughlin neighborhood meetings and express any concerns about what you thought of that? Or was that from some other people in your neighborhood?
Some other people in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And we've discussed it, too, at the meetings.
You did go to the meeting and discuss it, okay. And I heard you say a lot of walking. I would never walk up that steep hill there, but what would you like to see? He's talking about remodeling the inside, but is there something you had in mind, your neighbors around the outside, that would make it more what you think is acceptable to the neighborhood?
Well, no, we wouldn't have any say in that. It would be, you people would.
But you can make some suggestions to the developer or the applicant right now.
Yeah, the neighborhood probably would. There'd be different people that have some ideas what to do. There isn't much parking there. You couldn't have 50 people living there who each had a car. There's just not that parking. Part of the building is on 10th Street and that's part of their parking lot. It goes right up to the door of the hospital. So that would be very limited parking. And we would just like to see something done with that building that would improve the neighborhood and be in addition.
Anything else?
Anything would be better than the haunted house that Rocky and I wanted to do there.
Well, it could be that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being there. Any other public comment?
William.
I'm William Wees. I'm William Wees. I live at Oregon City. I am the closest resident to that facility. I've watched it for 35 plus years and it has never had anybody put any money into it. And so I'm, if this doesn't work, it's just going to become a really big eyesore. And so I'm really hoping what he's doing works. I don't mind an extra year worth of people working right outside my kitchen window, but I really hope it works because it'll drag the neighborhood down property value and everything if it doesn't. So I'm hoping what he's doing works. And he's doing a real major renovation. I've helped take care of that facility for a few months and those hallways don't go where those, he shows you that everything's changed. You're really talking about some real major renovation. It should, it should be good if he follows what he says he's going to do. I do have a concern about the parking lot because that's not the parking lot. That's 10th Street. There is no parking and that's all on street parking. Nothing's been abandoned. So that, that facility has maybe six parking places and everything else is on the street. So you start putting 50 people in there. If they all have cars, you really do have a problem. But that's not what the issue is today. So I, in fact, there's a little unused area at the end. It's a bunch of boulders and everything. I use it as a garden and I enjoy my garden. It's been my garden for 35, 40 years and Phyllis's. She lived there before me for 35 years. So it's part of the neighborhood. And we have always had lots of traffic because it's been the hospital, it's been the nursing home and so on. And so we're kind of used to that. But if you increase the amount of traffic, it might get, might get bad. That's what my concern is. I don't, I don't want to see, there is a lot of, a lot of foot traffic on Center Street. They come down from a McLaughlin house, come down all the way to the end, come back and probably 100 people a day walk that street. There's people that make it a regular routine. They're kind of afraid to go down the little one-way party now because there's nobody over there. It's kind of scary. It's almost a haunted house. But my kitchen window looks out. I can see the whole facility, including the house that goes with it from my kitchen window.
Are you above it or?
I am. My kitchen window is in this, well, at that point, I'm, actually it's about 10 feet above the ground. And then it drops off and there are another six or eight feet. So I'm, I can, I'm kind of, I look like the Snoopy neighbor, but I'm not. I'm just trying to get a glass of water. I'm sorry. That, they, to have nobody in there, they have security guards right now or four hours a night, three hours a night. And it's, it's secure at the moment. They had a bunch of homeless people in there. It was really unsecure and it was very scary. So I don't want to see a bunch of people that nobody knows who they are living in it again. As long as it's just being upgraded, it's great. And all I got to say then.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hagan, at this point, if you would like to make any rebuttal to those public comments, this is your time for that.
Thank you. No, I'm thankful that we've heard from the neighbors. I've spoken with Bill on many occasions. We certainly hope to improve the neighborhood and I'm thankful for their patience.
Okay, thank you very much. So at that point, we've heard all the testimony. I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to discussion and deliberation and possible motion from the commissioners. Commissioner Staggs, would you like to start?
Yeah, I, I want to say that I really appreciate the neighbors' comments and thoughts today because I personally think that this property in this particular place in the city is, I'm going to say, a very prominent and maybe even dramatic place. And I'm really interested to see what kind of improvements are proposed for the outside and the landscaping and that whole corner. Just reiterating what the, what the two public commenters said, you know, I think you can kind of read in their, in their language that they'd love to see this corner improved and made, made nicer. You know, right now it's a little bit of an eyesore and it's a very, well, it's a dramatic, it's a dramatic sight, you know? There's a big hill and a big building and there's big walls that are, that are very unapproachable. It's not very, in terms of the public realm and the urban environment, it's, it's not a great, it's not a great place, to be honest. So I'm really interested to see what the improvements are proposed for the exterior. But I know today we're, we're not really talking about that, so. But I'm generally, I think it's great that they're planning a remodel and improving this, improving this corner of the city.
Okay, Commissioner Schlegenhoffer.
Yeah, I think I'll just write on Commissioner Staggs' coattails on that, that I think we're all hopeful that this building becomes a, you know, a very nice part of that street. I've also driven by that building probably for 20 years and always hoped that it would turn into something better than it's been. It has, it has potential. It's big. You could definitely make that look nice. But yeah, we're not talking about, you know, the project or the budget or any of that. We're just trying to figure out how much time should they be allowed to work on it. I think we'll give them what they need and then just, you know, hope that it turns out the way we all dream it turns out. That's it.
Mike, let me add, Mike, can I add a couple of things?
Yeah, sure.
What, if any improvements are going to be required for the exterior and the kind of that whole, I mean, you've got like these six, seven, eight foot tall walls and kind of crummy landscaping at the moment. I mean, are we, are we going to be requiring anything be done to the exterior landscaping and walls and whatnot on this property as a part of this application?
Well, I, yeah, I think that's a, well, never mind. I'll let staff answer that. I, I think that's way beyond what we're being asked to decide on tonight. Maybe Ms. Basaleva can comment a little more on what the process will be when they come forward with something.
Yeah.
Will you answer something, Deliana?
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanted, maybe it is, it's beyond the scope of what we're talking about tonight, but that's a question that I have.
I don't believe we would be requiring anything. It kind of depends on what they propose. If they are proposing any changes to the exterior, then we would require them to comply with what's in our code. Potentially, there might be building code upgrades that are required, but we wouldn't know that until we submit or until they submit a building permit.
Right. I mean, today you couldn't build walls like that right on the sidewalk. I mean, today you couldn't build walls like that right on the sidewalk. They'd be too tall, I believe. You wouldn't be able to build that project today.
Lot of things like that in the city, I think. Commissioner Johnson, any comments or questions?
Uh, yeah, it, it's interesting to look at what could happen there in three to five years and the value to the city. But I think our actual activity for tonight is, what does it take for us to determine that it is a code interpretation for discontinuance of illegal non-conforming use? That's really what we're trying to do. But all of this other futuristic thing and history and all that, it's, it's gonna unfold as we go forward if we can give this applicant the confidence that the Planning Commission basically agrees with the recommendation from the Planning Department.
Mike, I have another question.
Okay.
And it's for, for Deliana. Are we gonna be seeing another planning application as a part of this? Are they gonna need to apply for other planning applications as a part of the work they're proposing?
Uh, potentially, um, depending on what is being proposed. Um, for example, if they have to like rebuild a big retaining wall that requires a variance, that may come before you again. Um, but a lot of the minor modifications that the applicant mentioned um, are done through a type-one site plan and design review process that is done at a staff level over the counter. So something like that wouldn't come before you.
Mike, can I just follow up with a question for the applicant?
Sure.
Niall, are there any, are there any, um, improvements planned for the site around the building?
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Do I need to reopen the public hearing?
Yes.
When you ask a question.
Okay. Yeah, that, Chris, that was a question for the applicant, right?
It was, yes.
Okay. So I'll reopen the public hearing for purposes of hearing that question and then the response.
Thank you. Hi, yes, um, so in terms of the exterior part, the primary change we will have to make will be, uh, in order to qualify for state regulations regarding assisted living homes. We would have to build a portico, basically, for the entrance, a covered area. Um, that would be required by the state. Uh, in terms of landscaping and, uh, similar issues, we certainly hope to beautify the existing wall, to improve landscaping on the Washington Street side. And then we hope to build out a patio on the interior courtyard, but that's not really visible to the streets. So there are plans for the exterior, um, with the site. The building placed where it is, of course, we don't have too much room on Washington to, to do much landscaping, but certainly cleaning it up, yes.
Mike, I just have a follow-up comment.
Sure.
Do you want to reopen or close?
No, it's, it's still open.
Okay. So I would just make the comment that I, that I hope that the applicant would recognize or see the, I'm gonna call it the importance of this corner of the city and use the opportunity to improve, um, to make improvements that make it a, you know, certainly within the, the code and within requirements. But I think it's an opportunity for the applicant to, um, to make an improvement to the public realm and the city in general.
Mr. Hagan, anything you want to respond?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the feedback. We hope to make it a, a point of pride of the community going forward and recognize that it hasn't been for many years, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you. So we will close the public hearing again and we'll go back to Commissioner Johnson for any comments or thoughts.
No additional comments.
Commissioner Guile?
Um, Chris stole all my thunder, Chris, great comments, uh, from the start to the beginning to the second opening. Um, I have a feeling this will come before us again on the Planning Commission, or maybe I won't be here at the time, but because of parking. And that's obviously one of my, been my issues for a long time, parking, especially at assisted living and retirement homes. And there's not gonna, as somebody pointed out, there's no parking there and it's a steep street to park on. So I have a feeling that this Planning Commission is gonna hear about parking issues when they come down to that 'cause you do have a minimum, don't you, and a maximum for parking for facilities like this? Is that right?
We do have a minimum and maximum that we would apply if a new facility was being built. For this one, um, this structure and this site is legally non-conforming, so it can remain as-is.
So again, then we'll be, the next commission, 'cause I won't be here at that time, will have the problem with, how's everybody gonna park to go for assisted living? And several people pointed it out that, that, um, uh, if they're gonna live there, if they all have cars, or even if somebody comes to visit, where are they all gonna park on Washington Street or Center Street? There's just no parking there. And I agree with that 'cause I do go by there on the way to my store. I just happen to think of, oh yeah, I do drive by that a lot. Somebody else is gonna have to face that issue, but parking's gonna be, um, probably something that comes back to this Planning Commission. But I completely agree with what, uh, uh, Niall, Niles is doing and, um, everybody else is doing to fix it up and clean it up. But, uh, I pity you all for parking. That's my comments, Mike.
Okay. Commissioner Gage?
I have nothing further. All good questions previous.
Okay. Um, I, I have two questions. I, I think there, I question first or advisement. I think first off, um, the non, the legal non-conforming use, that goes with the property and not with the owner, right? In other words, should there be a change in ownership or new partners or something, the non-conforming, legal non-conforming use stays in place?
That is correct, Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. Thank you. The other question for you, should it be the desire of the commissioners? And we haven't talked about this yet. Um, but it's a thought and it, and it kinda came to mind based on, um, the comment, the public comments and based on the fact that we've all driven by, um, what I think, Commissioner Staggs referred to it as a bit of an eyesore, but it'd be, it's way more than a bit of an eyesore. And it's been that way for a long time. So my, my question is legally, should it be the desire of, of the commissioners? Could we place a time limit on this, um, extension of the, of that one-year period, say to three years? And then, and require, and then require that it come back to a future Planning Commission? Uh, just to touch base and ensure that some progress is being made?
I'm having difficulty seeing a way to get to that. The interpretation is whether or not, you know, a legal non-conforming use can be discontinued for up to one year and then it can, uh, you know, after that point, it's no longer legally non-conforming. The, the interpretation that planning staff is recommending is that so long as there's an active building permit, it's still continuing in its use. You know, because we, we sort of accept the fact that structures or uses need to be repaired and so, and that's basically a continuation of the use. And that's what I understand the contin, the interpretation is. And it's, unless there's some basis to get to the idea that, well, it's continuing its use until three years, it's, it, I'm, I'm trying to get to a, a way to make, add that in. And, and Ms. Turway may have some input on that as well.
I would just add that it's up to the building official to determine if the building permit remains valid. And I think that's kind of around the question that you're asking. And we have no authority over their, uh, ability to make that call at all. It's all with the state.
Yeah.
Which our building official implements the state code. So even the city commission couldn't tell him how to, um,
Apply the building code.
Apply the building code.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to put a goalpost up there and there's no legal grounds for putting it out there.
Mike, can I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
It was the one I asked earlier and I never really got a response. I'm not sure whose ballpark it's in, but is anybody living there now? Or can people live there while they're doing this major, uh, construction, reconstruction?
I'm happy to answer that. Um, thank you. There are no people on-site. We had an unfortunate couple of months where some people who were not authorized were there. I guess that was just four or five weeks. Uh, no one on-site and there will be no one on-site in the hospital until it's finished and occupied.
That's all, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hey, do we have a motion?
Do we need to close, since he answered that question? Did you close the, uh,
No, I, I,
Hearing?
I think technically I probably should have reopened it again. I had already closed it, I think.
Okay. I move, I don't have it in front of me 'cause these screens are all wrong. I move, here it is right here.
CI twenty-oh-one.
CI twenty-dash-zero-zero-zero-one, code interpretation for discontinuance of illegal non-conforming use. And I'm not sure, do we say we're voting no or yes on it? I don't know how they,
Approve or disapprove?
Approve. I guess we approve the code interpretation then. That's what the city's asking, right?
Yes.
Okay. Here's, I saw your no and yes on there.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Guile, seconded by Commissioner Gage to approve CI twenty-dash-zero-zero-zero-one. Any other comments? And call for the vote?
Commissioner Staggs?
Chris? I'm gonna say that I, that I have reservations about the whole, I, um, I think the potential for no improvements to happen around the exterior of the building in the, kind of in the view of the public realm are possible. But I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote yes to approve the, um, kinda what we're discussing tonight. And I hope that it, I hope that the, I hope that the, uh, that the exterior and the site makes, that it gets improved so that it's a better place in the city. And I agree with, um, with Commissioner Guile about parking. Where, you know, currently there is no parking at all on, on-site. So I'm voting yes.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Completely agree with Chris's last statements. Again, thank you, Chris. Aye.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, item number four, general business for a draft public property tree removal policy and code amendments. Mr. Walter?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, Pete.
Yes? Okay, good. I'm gonna share my screen. Nope. Hold on a minute. Hold on one. Okay. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Pete Walter, senior planner. Um, and I'm gonna be providing a presentation, um, on the proposed policy and code amendments for tree removal on institutional land. Um, this process began in late twenty nineteen, um, in response to the removal of trees at the swimming pool. And, uh, it quickly became apparent to the city manager's office that there needed to be better coordination, um, and notification for tree removal on city-owned property at the time. Um, uh, we had a situation where some trees were removed from the swimming pool that, uh, the public was not aware of. And the Parks Department, um, was, uh, doing improvements for sidewalk. And, uh, due to a miscommunication, um, there was a, uh, lack of notification in that. And so part of the process improvements here are, there are six items that we are working on improvement for. Um, basically, we wanna be able to trigger a public notice process when trees meet a certain size threshold and trees are of a certain type. Um, we're gonna be reviewing, we've actually been reviewing a lot of our standards already and in our public works standards to determine whether or not there are alternatives to tree removal, um, through modification of public works, uh, standards like sidewalks and things like that, if those are feasible. Um, and we're also doing an internal review process for how departments coordinate amongst one another and making some code and policy recommendations as well. Um, so before we dive into that, I'll give you a brief overview of who maintains trees in Oregon City. So the city doesn't have a dedicated forestry staff and there are very few resources available for a, a unified citywide, uh, program of management of trees. So like a lot of cities with limited budget, um, tree maintenance is a team effort between several departments. And a lot of the responsibility falls to property owners and property managers. So, um, property owners are, on, so properties are responsible for maintaining and replacing street trees abutting them. Uh, commercial and multifamily properties and institutional properties are all subject to, uh, tree removal permits when they're removing trees on-site. So we have a process in place already for that. Uh, we have what's called a type-one minor site plan for tree removal or amendments to landscaping. And that's a, uh, over-the-counter permit. Does require, uh, Arbus report or a landscape architect to document the condition of the trees. And in every case, there is a mitigation requirement. Uh, so for street trees, there's always a requirement, replace at least one tree for each tree that's removed. And in some cases, more than one tree. And I'll go more into that. Parks and Recreation staff maintain city-owned parks and cemetery, the library, Pioneer Center, the cove and the pool. They are responsible for obtaining permits from planning for removal, um, of trees on those properties. Similarly, Public Works, um, they are responsible for treaties in storm ponds and water quality areas. Uh, occasionally corridor management of trees like along Mulalla Avenue falls to the Parks Department. Um, but in, in the main, it's abutting property owners. Public Works also gets involved when there are imminent hazard trees, which means a tree that has fallen or is about to fall within seventy-two hours. In that situation, they can remove the tree to take care of the problem as long as they obtain the permit after the fact, um, and do the appropriate mitigation. And then planning issues, reviews and issues permits for tree removal and replacement depending on, uh, where those trees are maintained. So we have approximately five chapters, sometimes six, if you include geologic hazard overlay districts, where there is always a review of tree removal. And those are the public and street trees, chapter twelve-point-oh-eight. The development review chapter, tree protection, is seventeen-fourty-one. Um, we also have a heritage tree program, which is a voluntary and non-regulatory program. Um, but there, the heritage tree program has a table within it which lists trees, which I'm about to show you, which we wanted to use as the basis for a new set of notifications and mitigation requirements. We also have the Willamette River Greenway, uh, where tree removal that is not timber-related or, you know, forest management-related, um, does require a type-three, uh, review by the Planning Commission. And natural resources overlay district requires replacement of trees within that district whenever you have, uh, trees being removed next to a wetland or stream and that sort of thing. Different, slightly different mitigation requirements for each chapter. Um, and they do vary. The majority of the tree removal permits that we see are handled through a type-one review process. Um, and in some places, there are exemptions. Um, and in some places there are exemptions. So what are we talking about in terms of new changes? Um, basically, there is a table in the code, which I'm showing you here. Um, and this is from the Heritage Tree Code. So this table was created with the, by the Natural Resources Committee and it has a size threshold and a tree type. And if a tree of, that's, uh, on this listed on this table, uh, the reason that they're listed as by species here is because the majority of these ones are large native species that may occur. But you also have broadleaf tree species and other conifer trees as a catch-all. And they have a, a size threshold which would make them eligible as heritage trees. So the Natural Resources Committee said that this table would serve as a good starting point for additional notification and mitigation requirements for tree removal on city-owned and publicly-owned land. Um, so if a tree were on that table and is eligible and it needed to be removed, all of the previous permitting that I've talked about would still apply. However, there would also be a notice process for seven days where a physical notice was posted on the tree and also a notice on our website would be provided. People would be able to subscribe to the notifications. Um, and then for seven days, people can call and ask questions as to why that tree needed to be removed. Um, if, and the reasons behind it. Are there any reports associated with it? I'd like to see the arborist report, for example, and that would be on the website. If after seventeen, seven days, there were unresolved questions, those questions would be, uh, referred to the city manager for resolution. Um, in addition to the notice process, um, there would be an increased mitigation size for replacement trees, uh, for, if the tree that was being removed was greater than twenty-five inches diameter. So the minimum, minimum caliper size would go from two inches to two and a half inches. Um, there is also a desire to have the wood reused, uh, as long as that is practical and the wood is sound, uh, for trees that are over twenty-five inches diameter. Um, if you're talking about really large trees that need to be removed, over fifty inches diameter, city commission authorization would be required in that case. So we would prepare a report for the city commission to discuss it. Um, at this point, I don't know if that would be a public hearing or a consent agenda item or something like that. I don't know yet. Um, and also, um, a desire to establish a fund for alternatives to removal. So if you, somebody was to wanna preserve a tree through the use of a, uh, meandering sidewalk, rerouting a sidewalk around the tree onto private property, for example, or using rubber sidewalks, which is a technology that can be used in certain situations, this fund could potentially be used to establish that, um, those alternatives. Um, along with this, there is a proposed draft new definition. I believe this is a new draft, Laura, I just wanna make sure of that. Uh, to define what public property means. And that means, uh, land owned by local, state or federal government, uh, publicly-owned utility providers, schools, colleges and public rights of way. Very broad definition. Um, it includes land owned by Oregon City School District and by Clackamas Community College, along with, um, you know, state agencies such as Department of State Lands, et cetera. So we had sent the draft code and policy around, uh, for review prior to, uh, starting this process. Um, we did receive comments back from the Parks and Recreation Staff. And I wanna share these with you, uh, because they do, uh, raise some of the practical concerns that are associated with adding additional process and notification. Um, Park Staff were concerned that mandating a larger inch caliper tree creates limited options. Parks Department does use bare root stock, uh, which is stock that is bred bare-rooted in a nursery. And there is a greater selection of species and variety, uh, larger root masses, easier to handle, better performance, uh, for, uh, replacement of certain trees. Also, they wanted to make the, uh, point that bigger trees are not always better as replacements be, uh, because smaller diameter trees have fewer problems with establishment due to root shock and transplant shock. The current replacement standard for street trees that's in the code is one point five caliper, one point five inch caliper. So there was desire not to have to change that. Um, Public Works Staff gave some good comments as well, um, that will help us clarify things as we move forward. Um, I just should, oh, I should first tell you about the Natural Resources Committee. Sorry, I had those two slides reversed. So I, uh, presented to the Natural Resources Committee on the tenth of June. Um, and the two comments that they had were that the process we're talking about should not apply to publicly-owned natural areas and open space lands which are being managed for stream riparian wetland and restoration projects approved by the city. For example, Newell Creek Canyon, um, and Canema Bluff's natural area have very detailed publicly-vetted and approved management stands for restoration of habitat in those areas. And they will need to take out trees to restore certain, uh, stands of other types of trees. Example would be Canema Bluff's where they were trying to reestablish, uh, Northern White Oak, Gary Oak, uh, by the removal of Douglas Fir Overstory. It was a critical part of the restoration process. If they had had to obtain permits for every single tree that they removed in that project, it would have been very slow and cumbersome for them to do their work. So the NRC felt that they, as long as there is a publicly-vetted and approved management plan for restoration in place, then these additional notification requirements, um, should, uh, and process requirements should not be, uh, required. And we do already exempt these types of projects in the NROD, um, the Natural Resource Overlay District, right now under the code.
Pete, before you go too, Pete, before you go too far from that, who oversees that? The process should not apply to publicly-owned natural areas. Who oversees that? The city, the city manager? Um, who?
Well, if you're talking about metro, on metro land, they have site staff who manage that proper, those properties and resource management staff. Um, we have already reviewed their restoration plans through site plan and design review, um, and through Natural Resource Overlay District review. So, um, you know, since they are restoration projects, they get categorized a little differently. Um, impacts such as bridges, trails, those sorts of things, those get reviewed for, and, and are required to be mitigated. But, um, the city also, um, has a natural resources consultant that we have on call for certain, uh, third-party reviews and that sort of thing. Um, the NRC also wanted to add the Pacific Medronee to the heritage tree eligibility list. Since it's a very small tree, it takes a long time to mature and it's quite rare. Um, but it would not necessarily be considered eligible due to its small size. So they wanted to add that as eligible when it is five inch diameter. And, uh, staff's recommendation would be to incorporate these changes into the code. Public Works comments, uh, included a question whether water quality facilities and detention ponds could be considered natural areas and would they be exempt from a type one minor site plan? Currently, we don't exempt tree removal in city stormwater facilities from permitting. Um, so, um, that would require more discussion and a code amendment. But I think it's fair that they could be considered natural areas because they're required to be managed as such under, um, our stormwater requirements for national pollutant discharge. And also whenever they are established, they are planted with native species and maintained as a native, native planting area. So in some respects, they're very similar to natural areas within the Natural Resource Overlay District, even though they're not in the Natural Overlay. Um, Public Works felt that requiring an arborist report for removal of an imminent hazard tree that has already been removed is costly and unnecessary. They mentioned that, uh, a typical arborist report was gonna run between two hundred to three hundred dollars per, per report. Um, and usually when we see these reports, they're dealing with one or two trees, mostly one tree. So that, that adds up. Um, they wanted us to clarify whether tree tree removal requirements would apply for every size of tree, whether it was a planted street tree, a formerly-planted street tree or just a volunteer tree that grew on its own and was one inch caliper. And, um, would we have to require a street tree removal permit in those situations? I think looking back in the past, we've said that a tree by definition is only a tree when it is six inches. But the trouble with our street trees is that they take a long time to even get to six inches. That's why we require street tree removal permits, um, for planted trees regardless of size. So I kinda see the sense in not applying it to volunteer trees. Um, but I don't think it should be waived for trees that are under six inches. Um, Public Works does see trees that are run into by cars occasionally. There's obvious damage. Uh, it's obvious that the tree has to be replaced. And they're recommending that we waive the arborist report for those specific situations. Um, they also would like us to waive the process for tree removal in medians, islands in the street, uh, street trees or trees in water quality facilities and natural areas. Um, that's gonna require a little more discussion because we currently don't do that. Um, but, um, in general, we agree with their comments. As for the reuse of wood, um, certainly there's wood that is not of sufficient quality or strength that it is reusable for structural timber and that sort of thing. Uh, may not even be that usable for sculpture or art. Um, however, um, that would be a clarification that we could make to the code. Natural Resources, as I mentioned. Um, so I do, I've listed some questions for the planning commission, which we can go through, um, one by one. Um, are there any questions that we, you wanna ask me now? Or shall I go through these list of questions and then we'll get to those? I think the next few slides will probably cover some of the questions that you have. But if they don't, we can talk about it at the end.
Yeah, let's go ahead and go through these.
Okay.
Mike, I had some questions on some of the things he's already covered.
Um, Pete, do these, do these questions loop back to what you've already covered? Or should we hear Tom's questions first?
Um, I'm gonna go through, I don't know, what was your, what was your question, Tom?
As Bob Mahoney pointed out when he left here, I have a lot of questions about trees. Not a tree hugger, just a tree defender.
Um. Can you talk louder, please?
I'm sorry, I'm right up next to the microphone.
Okay.
Uh, Pete, could you go back to the slide of proposed changes? Um, on the second bullet point, physical notice on a tree. Uh, this whole, those two bullet points below that, I think many of us were present about a year ago when all the neighbors came in and protested about a couple of trees that had been removed. Um, just posting something on a tree, I'm just wondering, what kind of a notice does that give to all those people around the city who wanna talk about the tree? And then review by city manager. I trust our city manager, but boy, they all came before the city commission. And I keep wondering why are something that enough people are interested in, um, if they wanna come to the city commission, uh, they're not gonna ask the city manager, they're gonna ask the city commission.
Yeah. Well, the normal process where we develop new policy and code, you know, it would go through, uh, uh, public vetting process. Normally, issues that are raised, um, to staff, they go to the city manager, uh, before they go to the city commission. That's the standard process. Sometimes people just, and people can speak during public comment anytime they wish. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm not one to say who people should and shouldn't talk to about process. I, I just feel like the city manager is where staff takes issues and the city manager will take those issues forward to the, to the various, uh, city commissioners.
Well, what I'm concerned about is a seven-day notice. There's fourteen days in between city commission meetings. Again, I'm referring back to that incident we have here in the city of, of last year. Uh, putting a notice on a tree, a lot of people don't walk by those trees, they don't see it. All of a sudden, the tree's gone and boy, do we ever hear about it. And it just seems to me that if we only, if it only goes to the city manager and he feels it's, again, I'm trusting our city manager, but if he feels that, well, this isn't important enough, we'll just take care of it, then all those questions, unresolved questions are gonna be hit with the city commission and it's too late, the tree's gone. I keep thinking the notice process of seven days is too little because, uh, if it's there long enough, some people who don't like the idea are gonna come and ask questions of commissioners.
This is, this is Laura, I just wanna jump in on one thing. Um, and to acknowledge the balance that these changes strike.
Okay.
Because what we wanna do is provide a clear process with as much clear and objective standards as we can. So everybody has the same expectation of how these are handled, um, and knows what the steps are. And then two is balancing it with the ability to get work done on the public's behalf. So we still, parks still needs to, or public works still needs to be able to address trees, particularly trees that are harm, you know, some hazard in some particular way. Um, I do wanna acknowledge that trees over fifty inches in caliper automatically go to the city commission. Um, but you're right that there is some level of discretion. And what I think is a little bit of a struggle in writing these is figuring out exactly when things get elevated because every tree removal in the city can't go on a city commission agenda. We just can't get stuff done. And so like figuring out, that's where we are relying on the city manager to, to be that decider. Um, but certainly the notice will go on the tree and then it'll go on a website. So if you wanna know what trees are being removed, you'll either see it on the tree or you'll, you'll.
If you happen to pass by it, some of the people who live further away, they don't go by the, let's say the pond or the swimming pool, who didn't know those trees were being removed, they wouldn't have seen those seven-day signs.
To be honest, I don't know that any one person could ever guess ahead to know what trees are going to, um, be opposed by people or not. I mean, say it's a modest-sized tree, I don't know how you know what people's feelings are. Do you know what I mean? Like.
I know what you mean.
The city manager and the scheme has a lot of a risk on his, risk on him for that position because they'll have to make that determination. And sometimes you really don't know if people were silent during the comment period or one person made a comment and, um, but what this does do is it places the, the onus on staff to put those arborist reports online and to put all the information out there and to really look at the alternatives to decide if it does make sense.
So that ties into one of my other questions, which was the arborist reports after the fact. Last year when we had that incident, they had an arborist report, they said, that said that the trees were, were, uh, whatever, they were diseased or whatever. But then everybody came in and complained and they found out, I'm not sure if they had an arborist come in and say, well, no, they weren't that really that bad, they didn't need to be taken out. So what does that mean, arborist reports after the fact? If a tree's taken out and it, and it was taken out wrong, um, those people were questioning why those two were taken out. So.
Tom, I was referring to a very specific situation in that.
Right, but those can happen again.
Strictly, uh, strictly speaking to imminent tree hazards, which are posing a threat to public safety, like they've fallen in the road or they're about to fall in the road, that type of situation.
Okay, I didn't see that there.
Definition in the code for that. Definition in the code for that.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, it applies to has fallen or is about to fall within seventy-two hours. And a determination is made onsite by Public Works personnel or a PGE forester to respond to that situation. It doesn't relieve them from the mitigation requirement, they've got to document what happened, take pictures and then obtain the permit.
Okay, it didn't clarify that, that it was only a tree that's fallen or, and the property are in the right of way or something, but.
So the arborist report would apply to all trees. But what Public Works is saying is it's a waste of money if the car hits a tree and the tree falls in the road.
That I understand.
You want an arborist report, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
But everybody else, if you're, if it hasn't fallen over, it's not about to fall over, you would need an arborist report.
Okay, and the other question I had on one of these, you had said about waiving the process for trees on medians and islands. Waiving what process are you talking about, Pete?
I'd have to ask Public Works for more clarification on that statement. It was sort of a blanket statement. So I'd need to get back to you on what they meant.
The question I had regarding that is we've been through several neighborhoods where the trees that were approved by the city back in two thousand and two thousand and three are lifting up the sidewalks in several neighborhoods. And I can attest to that personally. Some of them are far above the previous ones and I'm wondering, does that mean that waiving a process, that they waive fees or that they assist the neighborhoods? Were those trees that the city themselves approved for those neighborhoods?
Well, I think we can get to that when we go through some of my questions.
Okay, it's a pretty important question, so I'll look forward to that.
Pete, Commissioner Giles, is that it for you for right now?
For right now, yes, thank you.
Okay, as long as we're on this slide, I've got a couple of questions or comments. I think for people to be able to subscribe to notifications, I think that's a terrific idea. And back to Commissioner Giles' comment about those two trees that came down. If that had been in place, that policy had been in place then. Regardless if somebody had driven by and seen a sign, they would have been notified by email that those trees were slated for removal. So I think that's a terrific idea. But I will say I do have a problem with seven days, I don't think that's long enough. I think something more like fourteen days would be a lot more reasonable. Mitigation size of two and a half inch caliper. To me that, before I heard, read the comments about the problems with trying to plant larger trees. Two and a half inches does not seem like much of a mitigation for a tree that's greater than two feet in diameter. But I guess I would like to see that reviewed by more of an expert than I am, whether or not that makes sense. The next point on reuse of trees, in some of the reports that you sent to us prior to the meeting. It included firewood as one of the possible reuses of those trees. And I don't think that was the intention of the city commission. I think they were talking about more to be used for furniture or art projects or whatever, not to be, not to be used up one time as firewood. So I'd hate to see that included unless it was worded maybe that as a last alternative, if the wood is not suitable for any kind of a higher use, then firewood would be okay. But I hate to see that as, I don't think that was what was intended by the commission, so that's all I have on this slide.
I'll make a note of that.
Good points, Mike.
Yeah.
That's all I have on this.
Okay.
Oh wait, go back one, sorry. Pete, go back to the public definition.
Yeah.
Doesn't say county on there.
No, it doesn't, does it? I think that's because we always say county is local, but county is county, you're right.
Yeah, I think it should, it'd be clear.
All right, we will talk more about that too. So we've got a definition that we just saw for, sorry, let me get to that, public property. And I think that public property definition is fine. However, the original intent of this policy that staff understood when we were directed to prepare it by the city manager's office. Was that it would apply only to city owned land and removals of trees by city staff. And then we received further direction that it was to apply to institutional land as well. And which brought in the college, the school district, metro, blah, 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 blah. The difficulty with applying it in such a way is that we don't know the ramifications of that without doing a lot more exhaustive public process. Staff's recommendation would be to take steps a little more tentatively. And apply this policy and notice process just to city owned land and removals by city staff. Until there's sufficient time and resources to amend our tree codes in a much more comprehensive manner.
This is Laura, can I jump in on this one?
Yeah.
So this, yes, this started with city owned land and city staff removal of trees. And then in October, as Pete said, the commission broadened it. I think the commission told us to apply it to institutional properties, we're going to apply it to institutional properties. It has different code ramifications, so in other words, we can do an internal policy for whatever we can apply. But if we want to apply it to other properties, that's the changing of the code. Pete did notify a variety of agencies and heard concern from metro. And we've documented some of those concerns related to managed habitat areas. There is some nuances related to what Commissioner Giles is talking about. So for street trees, I think that's another interesting question. So back in the day, the developer got to choose the tree and species. Then in about ninety-nine, we adopted a street tree species list. We also since then made wider planting areas and required tree wells. So do these apply when property owners get a little bit of raising of the sidewalk because the wrong tree was planted? There's no fee for any of the tree removal permit process, you asked a fee question. So we recognize this is a burden and do our best to try and help out property owners. They are ultimately responsible for the maintenance of the tree and the sidewalk in front of their home. And so if the tree is lifting up the sidewalk, what is the process? If it is a really nice big tree lifting up the sidewalk and are they subject to these as well? Because it is also on city owned property.
Okay Laura, so to ask about that, these are trees that were approved by the city in two thousand and two and two thousand and three in several neighborhoods. And when an entire neighborhood, all the sidewalks are lifting three to four inches above the sidewalk in front of them, tripping hazards. I know it's a responsibility of the homeowners, but these were trees that were on the approved list by the city in those years of two thousand and two, two thousand and three. And now those same trees, if we were to cut down this one or that one, then they won't be uniform, they would be all different. So an entire neighborhood may have to be cut down to be able to stop that from happening. And all the sidewalks have to be replaced because it is that bad in some neighborhoods.
It is bad in some neighborhoods, I want to acknowledge two things though. One is that the year I'm citing is the year the subdivision was submitted to the city. So when you say two thousand and two, it could have actually been a ninety-nine subdivision approval or ninety-eight. So there's a little bit of a lag, so sorry that I didn't explain that sooner. And then.
And I think it was twenty twelve when the street tree list was amended.
Yeah, I realized that, too late for a lot of the neighborhoods.
I didn't know that good point, but it kind of.
My point was that if we were to cut down some of those trees and not all of them, that's going to be uniform. Somebody already cut down one and put a cherry tree and it doesn't match all the rest of the trees.
So from an urban forestry perspective, we don't want them to all be the same. Because say you get that beetle that likes that tree or something like that, then all the species are gone. So we have no requirement that the species all match. And it's actually nice to not have the same species.
So in a row of trees when the city approved like down one whole street and down another, and they were all to be the same? The city now is saying that that's not critical?
The city has never required them to all be the same species.
Hmm, that's interesting, that's not what developers have said, that I've asked why, but, okay. Just concerned about all these trees and now these new trees that are on our list, Pete. And I think I talked to you about it before from two thousand and twelve. How do we know that those won't lift the roots, won't lift the trees? Are they sidewalks on those? I mean, and then what is the responsibility of the city for having those on an approved list, either back in nineteen ninety-nine or now? What's the?
The adoption of, you know, the street tree list and the street tree code is adopted through a public process using the best information that we have. You know, we had several arborists and agencies look at our street tree list. We compared it to other municipalities' street tree lists. We looked, we widened our planter strip requirements to provide a little more growing area. And we adopted some planting standards as well. But ultimately, when you're talking about putting green things in a hardscape landscape area, it's just a matter of time. So this is an added insurance situation. Most cities have a recommendation street tree list. You know, we've got trees that are as small as dogwoods and crepe myrtles for the smallest areas. And we also recommend and actually mandate the use of root barriers in new subdivisions. And for replacement trees. So short of drastically changing our public street standards to require a lot larger planting areas and that sort of thing. You know, this is as good as we can do at this point.
Okay, Pete, I lived in northeast Portland on about thirty-third for a long time, those streets were pretty narrow and those trees were huge. But they never lifted the sidewalks like the ones I've seen here in Oregon City. And so when I saw that, when you said waiving process for trees in medians and islands. I wasn't quite sure what process you were talking about waiving. And what responsibility does the city have for all the trees that were put in under their guidance and recommendations at the time? I mean, is that the process you're talking about?
The street trees are covered under a warranty for two years, just like most public improvements are after they're constructed and planted. After that period is over though, the code clearly states that it's the abutting property owner's responsibility.
Two years of tree, a sapling that's two and a half inches doesn't have very big root systems.
Yeah, Oregon City has clay soils, a lot of cities have clay soils, you know, but it is very important to choose the right place, right tree, right place. So we try to adhere to that as much as possible.
Okay, I'll take it offline with you to ask other questions about that. Mainly I was asking, what do you mean by waiving what process when it comes to?
That was a comment from Public Works Department, I'm going to ask them for clarification of that.
Okay.
We can talk about it.
Is the focus on the tree the wrong place? Should we be looking at other things? I often look when I walk around and look at the sidewalks raising and lowering. And, you know, I don't know what the standard is for a sidewalk in a residential neighborhood, I would hope it's four inches. But some of those get a pretty small four inches. And dandelions will start raising them almost. We can't solve it all with a tree, I think it's a combination of things. Like your combination of Portland, I don't know what the soil is there. But I know what the soil is here is red clay. And it's tougher for trees to go through this red clay. So there's two or three other things.
I'd like to get through these questions because I think I might be able to answer some of these questions that are coming up.
Okay, sorry to interrupt Pete, but when I saw those items on your report, I wanted to clarify what you meant.
Sure, let's circle back around at, once I got through this. So should there be additional permitting, notification and mitigation requirements that apply to all public land? Street trees and abutting owners or just the city owned property and city staff? I think you've heard our feeling about it. Are storm ponds and water quality facilities natural areas that should be exempt from these additional requirements? We feel that they are and that there are already pretty good regulations in place and permit processes in place for these types of facilities. Their city staff are required to obtain those permits. And we would recommend that they be exempt from the additional noticing and mitigation standards for those situations. Unless, of course, they're in a natural resource overlay district where they've got to do a if they're doing anything that's large scale, they may have to do a type two land use review. But in most cases, those tree removals are already listed as exempt as long as they are mitigated.
Can you expand on that last one just a little further? If there is existing trees in areas where they're going to be putting storm ponds and water quality facilities? That means that they can remove them without any question from the city?
If you have an established storm pond with a tree in it that needs to be removed, either because it's dead or diseased or dying or hazardous, it has to be replaced. But the Public Works Department does not want to have to wait seven days. And then have to potentially have their decision deferred, referred over to either the city manager in that situation. They would like it to continue under the current process where they just obtain a permit. Have an arborist report and replace the tree based on the code.
And you said existing, I'm asking about proposed developments, where there's a proposed development and they're going to put a storm pond. And there's large trees that are twenty-four or bigger inches around diameter. They don't need permits to remove those or no questions?
That would be part of a land use process, that would either be a land division or a site plan and design review process. So they're already getting reviewed through a minimum type two process with public notice and comment in those situations.
I see, even if it's in a private area, a new development area?
Yeah, that's what it's for.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sure. So the current requirement is for a property owner to furnish a arborist report if they want to remove a street tree. And we have codified that the arborist report can be waived when there is a sidewalk mobility hazard or tripping hazard caused by tree roots. And where the tree damage and death can be verified objectively without a report. In those situations, staff can require a one for one replacement, one tree for one tree. And the reason for this is because it was such, it continues to be such a widespread problem. And a costly problem for sidewalk repair and replacement. That adding the additional burden of requiring an arborist report when it's clear that the problem of the hazardous tripping is caused by the tree root. Was not fair and subsequently that is not a requirement. However, we would require an arborist report and full mitigation. So that would mean requiring more than one tree be replaced in any other situation.
If it's a whole neighborhood development, Pete, do you mean that an arborist has to come out to see the whole neighborhood? And look at what the trees have done to that neighborhood?
Well, currently it's based property by property, which is, you know.
But if it's a whole neighborhood that was done?
Not great, yeah, but you do get situations where the problem is so widespread that property owners do join up together and have the same arborist furnish a report for several properties. And that just makes sense, it's a lot more efficient. And usually you can see that sidewalk lift starting or already happening or about to happen when you look up and down the street.
Is that arborist at the cost of the homes or of the city?
It's at the cost of the property owner, but we don't require that arborist report when there's a tripping hazard.
Okay, and by the one tree for one tree, who provides the trees? Even though the trees are placed and are destroying everything, the residents, current residents have to replace those trees, not the city?
Yeah, that's what the code has said for a very long time.
Okay, even though the trees were approved by the Okay, even though the trees were approved by the city, are on a list of approved trees by the city?
Yes.
Wow. Poor neighborhoods.
Is, is there one, Pete? Is there one-
Pete, can you explain, Pete, can you, can you explain a little more than the last couple of words of what, full mitigation-
Yeah, okay.
Would mean what?
Uh, well, there, when you look at our code, we have a table, it has two columns in it. It says, uh, in one column, it says the number of trees that are required to be replaced if you're um, trees of a certain diameter. So it goes from one up to fifteen inches or more. And currently, you're only required to replace one tree with one tree regardless of the removed tree's size if there is a tripping hazard. Um, and otherwise, you are required to replace one tree with two trees, up to five trees, if you don't have an arborist report. So, basically, we're dealing with a situation where you've got enough room in the planter strip for five trees along your property up per frontage and it just makes sense to replace those trees rather than to plant a whole bunch of other s- of trees in between them where they're gonna be crowded and that sort of thing. That's been our current policy for several years, ten years, I think. And it's codified now.
Okay.
Pete?
Yes?
Uh, this is Fern. Uh, is there still a policy or procedure for homeowners and, and the street trees in this planter strip? If they take down a tree in the planter strip, they can plate, replace the tree in their own front yard, side yard, or on their own property?
Oh, not on the strip, but on their own property?
Yeah, I, I think I've read that that's there or heard.
It is. Um, the last round of code amendments, we made um, a change to the code that still allows that, but it's not the highest priority and it's not an automatic okay. We wanna prioritize planting trees in the planting area if there's sufficient space.
Right, right.
And we've got a street tree list that's tailored to the width of those planter strips. So, rather than, but if there is no alternative, yes, we have that option. The difficulty with that is that the, it requires a recordation of a deed restriction against the property because we're now requiring the enforcement of a public tree code on private property. So we, and people do do this, they, they voluntarily record that covenant against their property and agree to replace that tree in the future if it's removed. So, that's an option.
Just out of curiosity-
One follow-up, sorry. One follow-up question on that area.
Yeah.
Pro, if, if the homeowner is more proactive on watching the situation with his street tree and the sidewalk starting to lift, what if, i- if, if he's been around and, and knows that it's gonna happen, hey, I'm gonna either replace the sidewalk, can he cut the tree down or get a permit to get rid of the tree before the lifting is so bad that he knows, now I'm gonna spend money on a new sidewalk? And is, is there a way to get, to kind of reward them if they're looking at it to save some cost rather than, no, you gotta wait and get an arborist report, uh, if it's a tripping? Well, it's not a tripping today, but it could be a tripping in six months or a year down the road.
Yeah.
The homeowner wants to get rid of it now.
Our practice has been to allow that, yes.
To allow that?
As long as it's, yes. As long as it's documented and they can show that there's a, there's a raising going on. Um, because if we don't allow that, it's gonna happen uh, sooner or later. Um, the difficulty is that we don't have, we're not trained forestry staff, we're not, I, I, I know cities like Portland will say, no, you can't remove that tree until there's an actual lift and an actual tripping happens. And then they wait two years and then they're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's what I hear from the foresters in Portland. Um, you know, so you just, yeah, you prolonging the life of that tree, maybe, you know, one year, two years, maybe five years, which is great, but uh, it's inevitable that it's gonna happen.
And just to add on, the tripping hazard as defined in our code is a quarter of an inch. I mean, it's not real hard to get there.
No.
Yeah, that's your, that's the ADA requirement.
What's the current width of the-
That's what people get cited for.
Pete, what's the current width of the, uh, islands right now, the, that, that the trees are planted? Is there a-
For new subdivisions?
New subdivisions, yes.
It's five feet.
Five, five feet?
Yeah.
What was it before?
Four-point-five.
Uh, I think, I've seen him in our neighborhood, two-point-five or three. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, there was a period in the nineties where they were two-point-five feet. That was the standard. It wasn't really a standard, it was more of an afterthought.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you, Pete.
Um, sure. Um, final question, should the city prohibit tree removal if an arborist determines that a tree is healthy and not causing hazards? Um, if there were adequate resources for a city arborist report that countered the assertion that the tree was hazardous, um, yeah, you could probably prohibit that tree removal, but it would require, I think, that we provide a peer review or a, a contrary or at least third-party objective arborist report about that tree in order to prohibit its removal. Because we're no longer gonna be taking the property owner's arborist report at face value, which is what we currently do. We trust the property owner to provide a, a certified arborist report and base our decision off of that. Um, so there are some additional costs associated with the city prohibiting tree removal if the tree were healthy and not causing hazards. Um, however, in majority of the situations that we see, it's clear that the tree is ha- is causing either a sidewalk lift or it's got an arborist report that documents uh, disease or damage. So-
Pete, I see that.
Yeah.
Go ahead. What's that? No, I, I just have a, I have a problem with that one. I'm just thinking about my own situation. I've got, I've got two street trees on, around a corner a lot, I got two street trees on one try to the side of the house that have, have never thrived. They're thirteen years old, they're about three and a half feet tall, they're just, they, I really need to replace them, but I shouldn't, I don't think I should have to go get an arborist report because healthy, yeah, well, you know, they're, they're still growing, they still have leaves every year, but um, and, and they're not causing a hazard, but there's bad trees and I'd like to replace them. I don't think I should have to have an arborist.
That's a very common problem. Um, the way that I would recommend to remedy that in that situation would be not to require an arborist report and um, you know, it would be great and it would be very efficient if we had maybe a, an arborist working in that capacity, either as a contractor for the city or on city staff. We don't, so um, you know, that's the difficulty there. It's a, it's a resource question and I think it puts the burden back on the property owner, which isn't necessarily an efficient or fair thing to do. Um, and it does result in situations where their trees are limping along and they're not really aesthetically that great, but they're not dead or desi- fully diseased yet. So, I think that's a common problem. Um, I, yeah, so.
Uh, Pete?
These are great questions and comments. Um-
Pete?
I think there's-
I got an idea.
Go ahead.
All right. This is Dirk. Okay, I'd say it's an idea, I don't know if it's a good idea, but, and I don't know if there's any way to implement it either, but I've seen many cases where a tree that's known to lift the sidewalk, uh, you know, using some preventive care, root barriers were installed before it lifted the sidewalk and-
Yeah.
Fifteen years later, it still hadn't lifted the sidewalk. So, how come nobody's pushing any preventive care instead of just waiting for it to break the sidewalk and chop it down?
Um, I, I do encounter property owners who are proactive that way, but there's no codified requirement for that.
Is there any way to encourage that?
The requirement is for maintenance, but it doesn't-
Right.
You know, and, and we do try to provide resources on our website that people can book up, but uh, and then when we do replacements, we have the, the, we do require a root barrier.
Yeah, and the new developments, correct?
And, and new developments.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen older ones where people did that and then didn't have to cut the trees down at all.
What Dirk just mentioned ma- makes a lot of sense because, in one of the neighborhoods I'm referring to, um, uh, the developers put the trees in and they forgot to remove the root ball, so they had to come back and dig up the trees, take the root ball off, put it down, and they could have easily put in root barriers, but they didn't. And I would like to see that as a requirement of developers for trees that they're putting on, on strips to put a barrier in, but I'm not sure if you can ask developers to do that. Because back fifteen years later, when they start to lift, it's too late for the, for the house homeowner.
Well, as soon as it cracks, you can dig, you can cut the roots along the sidewalk and put in a barrier.
Won't that kill the tree to cut the roots? Big roots?
From what I've seen, no.
If you do it soon enough.
Yeah.
I believe we do require the root barrier for new construction.
Good.
It's the tree replacement mitigation and I recall the conversation swirling around at the time that we discussed it in um, mitigate, replacement was, it's costly and sometimes you have to dig such a big hole to get a good root barrier and the problem is there's too big of a tree and too small of a space, you don't really have enough room to get the big of a hole.
Well, normally, it's just a, a narrow trench right along the concrete because they're right under the sidewalk, they're finding the gravel, they're going in there. You cut those, you pretty much stop the problem.
Yeah, so right, yeah, right now, it's not a requirement for mitigation and replacement just for, but, just for new, yeah.
Anyway, I feel for your mic.
Thank you, Pete.
Yeah, so next steps here, um, just wanna reiterate what we're talking about. We're talking about additional notice, mitigation requirements for publicly owned land. Um, particularly, wanna make the distinction that we were wanting to initially talk about this with respect to city-owned land, but it is something that the city commission wants us to apply to institutionally zoned land, which has larger code ramifications. Um, we're gonna return to the NRC uh, March of July for further discussion and we're also gonna talk to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee on July twenty-third about this. We begin our legislative process in August and have Planning Commission, City Commission work sessions, August, uh, potentially doing hearings in August and September.
Did I hear you say that you were gonna uh, improve the notification as Mike and I had proposed from seven to fourteen days? Did you say that you were including that?
Yeah, if that's a recommendation from this commission.
Okay, I know Mike's agreed with me on that one.
Is that the recommendation from Plan Commission as well?
Guess you'll have to ask.
We did have discussions about fourteen days originally when Pete administered a bunch of meetings with all city staff and the concern what, from Public Works and Parks was the ability to accomplish projects in a timely manner. And there-
I think Mike and I understood that and I'm not speaking for Mike and he can speak for himself, but just the fact that seven days doesn't give a lot of notice out there to people and they don't know what's happening and they're not driving by an area or they're not on your website or, I'm not sure if you're gonna send emails out to every single person that were looking at this tree. Seven days to me is really short time and I think Mike had said the same thing. Mike, go ahead.
Let, let's just go down the list here real quick, whether um, for each commissioner, would you rather see that be seven days or fourteen days? Uh, Commissioner Stacks?
Uh, one clarifying question before I answer the question, before I answer that question. So, are we talking about the timeframe for a tree that is a problem tree or any tree?
We're talking about the notice, notice period for a tree that is eligible to be a heritage tree off of that list we showed you earlier. Um, and a permit has been requested to remove the tree. We're talking about a fourteen-day notice period with a physical notice on that tree and on city staff.
But is it a tree that is in danger of falling or it's a hazard or?
It has a, yeah, it has to be, there has to be a reason for its removal.
Okay.
Either dead, diseased, dying or hazardous.
But you did say a heritage tree.
It's a certain species that's on that list and it's of a certain size, so.
So let me ask this question, if we, if you extend the time period to fourteen days, that just means that someone who doesn't wanna see the tree go away can, can make a public comment about it, but it still is a tree that needs to be removed because it's falling or diseased or whatever? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. And it would have a report, arborist report that documents what the condition is and the arborist's recommendation would be for whatever it is, replacement, remove and replace, et cetera.
Chris, what happened a year ago was that an arborist came in about two trees and then, and said they weren't diseased, but somebody on the staff went ahead and cut them down anyway, even though they weren't diseased by the arborist's own report?
Yeah, and presumably, the tree won't get cut down until the arborist report is done and there's consensus that-
Mm-hmm.
It should be removed.
Yeah, I mean, this is really starting to look a lot more like a land use process. Um, you know, and, and cities like Gresham and Portland have a process for tree removal, which is very much like land use process. It's a lot more, uh, you know, they have type-one, type-two and type-three tree removal permits. They have a certain exemption that allows a homeowner to remove a certain number of trees in a given year on their property without having to get a permit, but up to a certain size limit. Um, what we're talking about now is an incremental step towards something like that in the future.
Mm-hmm.
That's the way I look at it and I've worked with public tree removal for the city since two thousand and six and I just see it incrementally moving more and more in that direction. Um, the thing that co- the thing that concerns me the most is that we need, if we're gonna go that route, we need to have a much more fully-fledged public process. Um, because it'll be examining not just uh, the code that we're looking at right now, which is seventeen forty-one, but chapter twelve oh eight, uh, seventeen forty-nine, et cetera, et cetera, so that we have much more of a streamlined and integrated process.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this, Pete, the seven or fourteen day thing would, would not apply to a tree that is an imminent hazard, right?
That's our recommendation is that it not, the notice period not apply to an imminent hazard situation, but the permitting requirement does, meaning it's gotta be mitigated and documented to the extent that it can be under the circumstances by the, by the staff that are on site at the time.
Right. So my question to everybody is, what's the difference whether it's seven or fourteen days if it's already been a tree that's been determined that's, is in this category of falling down or it's a hazard or whatever?
Didn't he just say that it, it doesn't apply to those, it's only applying to other heritage trees? Is that what I heard, Mike?
Well, I understand. Go ahead. The difference is that um, you have the opportunity to raise your concerns with, with staff and have a dialogue about alternatives, discuss whether or not alternatives were considered before the decision is issued. And if you're not satisfied with what staff is telling you at that point, you have a recourse to talk to the city manager, uh, and, you know, deal with it that way. Now, we haven't really talked about what the city manager's role is going to be in those situations where somebody's not resolved and still has unresolved questions. And I think that will be a discussion we'll need to have as well.
So for example, there could be a dispute about the arborist, was, the arborist study- So for example, there could be a dispute about the arborist, was the arborist study.
There could be a dispute about the arborist study. There could be a, uh, a question that the alternatives analysis that was provided was not, uh, rigorous enough, for example.
Right.
Uh, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, in that case, I'm going to agree with, with, um, I'm going to agree that extending it to be fourteen days is a, is a good, a good idea.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Um, yeah, I think considering everything we've discussed, uh, fourteen days sounds more appropriate.
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, fourteen days with, uh, understanding that the key person someplace down in the chain of command is on vacation for a week. He, he does, he's out of the picture completely and nothing happens. So fourteen is better than seven, I think, for something like this.
Commissioner Gage?
I was going to say no, let's stick with the seven, but after, uh, more clarification and questions from everybody, I think fourteen is fine.
Okay, and Commissioner Guile and I have already touched on the commission and planning commission to be fourteen days.
Thank you all because, uh, you should have seen what hit the newspapers here when that happened here and, and a tree's got cut down. It went all over.
Hey, Mr. Walter, anything else on that topic? No, that's all I have. Um, would the, I guess I would like to know whether the planning commission would revisit this, uh, again, uh, after we've heard from natural resources and PrAC, but in particular PrAC in a work session? Or is this something that you want me to come back to as a discussion item? It'll be a work session, sorry. Um, we'll just have to look at the scheduling for that. A joint work session, is that what you're talking about? I'm not sure if it'll be joint or just, uh, Barty, did you want to talk to that?
Who?
Oh, no. Um, I think it would be beneficial to have a joint work session between, uh, natural resources and planning commission. Um, but at this point, um, I don't know. I, uh, I think definitely a work session between planning commission and city commission would be helpful as a joint work session because by that point we'll have, uh, a pretty fully fleshed out code. Okay. All right, is that it? Yes, that's all I have, thank you. Okay. Um, it's getting late, what do we got? Five or six minutes? Um, but maybe this may not take long, I don't know. Um, this discussion on diversity, equity, inclusion, this is something that I asked Mr. Way to put on the agenda. Uh, and I believe you all saw the letter that, uh, members, several members of our planning staff sent to, uh, Tony Conkle and then that was forwarded on to the city commission, I believe. Uh, kind of recognizing the not so wonderful history in our country of, of zoning regulations and how they were used to, um, isolate members of certain groups, uh, and the importance of, uh, not letting that happen, uh, as we go forward. And this obviously is a real hot button in our community right now. Um, the reason I brought it up, my first instinct when I saw the letter from, uh, staff members was to myself write a letter of support just as a private citizen, um, stating my support of what they did. And then, then my next thought was, I want to wait a minute, maybe the whole planning commission would want to, uh, write a letter of support. So, um, that, that's basically the question I have, uh, and I'm, I'm open for commissioners' comments on that, whether, um, whether we leave it to each of us individually to do what we think is right or whether, uh, the group would like to, um, I, I'd be willing to, to draft a letter for then, of course, all the commissioners to approve and, and, uh, sign on behalf of the commission. So those are, those are my thoughts on that. Any comments?
I have one.
I like the idea. I, I'd like to see us do this as a group.
Okay. Commissioner Guile, you have a comment?
Mike, when I first read that, um, I totally understand and agree with the fact that, that we're all supposed to be open and all that. But my first thought, wasn't that supposed to come from the city commission? And, um, they've already made a statement on that? Or is that, is, do we have to show as a planning commission that we also agree with that? Even though most of the things come from the city level, the city commission level? I wasn't quite sure I understood the need for our, us to do it, but I, I agree with it if we do it.
Well, I, I certainly it's not a requirement.
No, but.
It, it just seemed to me that that would just, we, we would just be, um, reaffirming to the city commission how important we think this is, um, e- especially in terms of the fact that we're, we're going into a public process for the comprehensive plan update. Um, so that, that seems like pretty good timing, that, that we affirm to the commission, um, how important we think these topics are in, in the process of updating our comp plan, not i- in the process and then also in the, in the final outcome that we're aware of, of these topics. It's not, certainly it's not anything that's, that's required. Uh, I, I would just let the commission know that we as a planning commission see the importance of this.
Okay, that I totally understand. I just, I was wondering why we were doing one separate of the city commission, but totally understand and, and approve if that's what we decide to do.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer, I see your hand.
Yeah, Chair Mitchell, um, I, I would, uh, be happy with you writing the letter as long as we could all put in our own bits of, uh, you know, ideas, ideas and thoughts. We all have different ideas and thoughts. So if we could put in our own opinions and some thoughts that maybe help, uh, help guide you drafting the letter and then we can maybe discuss it one time before you finalize it.
Oh, um, and I may need a little advice. Um, I, I don't want to get into a chain email public meeting thing. So I, I see you guys are all looking over toward Mr. Kabeizman and I would be doing the same thing if I was there.
Yeah.
Um, is that something that we can, or would be allowed to do by email, work on a draft? Or should I write a draft and have it for two weeks from now and then, or it would go out with next Monday's agenda packet? For comment? What, what do we do?
One thing that might be helpful is if there are a less than a majority of a group that, uh, are more interested than others, that sub-majority get together and work on the letter and then present it to the, to the commission. And that way those, you, let's say we have seven members, those three members could hopefully massage and, and get the various interests and, and thoughts. But yeah, once you start circulating a letter among the entire planning commission, that, that starts running into a problem.
We're down to six now through June. Does that require four?
So you, you, anything less than a majority, you'd need, or, or less than, so you'd need four? You could still do three is the point.
Yeah, you're still at seven as a whole. Um, I want to interrupt, sorry for the interruption, to acknowledge that it's ten o'clock and we need a vote by a majority of the planning commission to go past ten o'clock.
To discuss this issue.
Well, our policy is to have the vote before ten. It's ten on the dot, so I'm hoping to squeeze it in real quick. Um, we have minutes and then, um, communications left.
And the fifteen minutes.
I'm okay for ten to fifteen minutes.
I'm okay.
Okay, a- anybody have any objection to another ten or fifteen minutes? Okay. So we'll, we'll go on. So, um, kind of a show of hands, um, I would be.
Vern has a question for you.
Using Mr. Kabeizman's recommendation, I, I would, I, what?
Vern has a question for you.
Okay.
Is this letter, are we going to get pretty deep and bury ourselves by doing it? Or is it a letter of general support that says this is the direction we got to go? I don't think we know precisely where we want to go with different topics within that letter, but just a support letter to what the commission is doing at this time. And now, I don't know if we can reserve to change that later as it gets more maturity to it.
Well, my, my intention would be a letter of support to the same people that, that, uh, that the planning staff wrote their letter to, um, send a letter of support to those people, supporting what was written by the planning staff members, uh, and, uh, emphasizing that with the public process for comprehensive plan update and our new comprehensive plan, how we view topics of equity and inclusion and diversity, uh, as a key part of the process. That's all, not going into the weeds, not making specific recommendations, just saying we need to be keeping these topics in mind as we go into our comp plan.
Mike, Tom here. I agree with whatever, whatever the staff wrote and whatever you, I know you're a good writer and you express yourself well. If Dirk wants to add in with you on any of that, I'm fine with what you guys write together or what you write separately based on what the staff wrote. I don't need to see it until it's ready.
Okay, well, uh, Dirk, I know Dirk would like to see it and would anybody else? My plan would be to write something over the, before the next week, uh, before next Monday, yeah, and send. Anybody else like to look at that besides Dirk?
You guys?
Yeah, I think it'd be good, I, I think it'd be a good idea if everyone saw it.
Yeah, we can't legally, we can't do that.
So can she, can he send it?
Unless we, unless we, we bring it to the meeting in two weeks and we work on it together in two weeks.
Right, so the drafting of it and the circulation and editing, you know, without it not being in public would have to be limited to less than a majority. And so the idea is that up to three members would get together during the course of the next week to write, send back drafts, edits, and then next Monday you would all see it one week in advance of the meeting, your next meeting, at which point you would either say yes exactly or possibly some additional edits among the group. So you would all see it. You would all have a chance to approve it and give comments. But, you know, if you have, if you want a, a hand in shaping the, the full letter, you know, the, the original letter, you know, that, that would be the group of three that Mike's putting together now.
I'd go along with Dirk and Mike and then I'll, I'll read it later, whatever.
Whoever else, I, I go along with it, so we've got to pick between Patty and Chris.
It could be just two, you don't need three.
Dirk and, and Mike.
It could be the two.
Chris, you want to do also?
It could be one additional, it could be up to three.
Yeah, up to three.
So is there a?
Right.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll participate, I'll come up.
Cool, okay.
Yes, all right, so I'll, I'll, I will write something and I'll send it to Chris and Dirk over the next few days and then whatever the three of us come up with will be in the agenda packet that you'll see a week from tonight. And then we can do a final edit at our meeting two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks.
Agreeable?
Yes.
Yes, most good.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's move on into approval of minutes and I'm probably not as up to speed as I should be on Robert's Rules of Order. Can we do all of these under one motion or do we need a motion for each, a second vote for each, all three?
Uh, you could do them all under one motion.
Great.
Then under Robert's Rules of Orders, if I wasn't present for some of them, can I still vote? I, I don't know if I will.
You can vote to approve minutes even if you were not present at the meeting.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move we approve the, the minutes of, or did somebody else want to do it? The minutes for, uh, the, I guess for four twenty-two, six ten of nine, oh, they're all two thousand and nineteen. Four twenty-two of two thousand and nineteen, six ten of two thousand and nineteen and nine nine of two thousand and nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moving second, any, any, uh, any other comments? Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Stacks?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Okay, last item, communications.
Okay, um, hi, this is Laura. Uh, the only, uh, one update I have is that the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan renamed to Thimble Creek Concept Plan has received, um, its first reading again and we received clear direction from the city commission to go back and to add language to protect those, um, habitat areas, uh, that the commission was reviewing. So you'll see that, um, they had a strong desire to do it quickly. Um, so we'll do it as quickly as we can and you will see that roll through as a new legislative file at some point.
We will see it?
Yeah, because we're going to have to change, we're going to have to create a new overlay district or amend an existing overlay district or we have to write a bunch of code in order to protect the trees.
And that is because the city commission asked for that, but they can't just do it, we have to do it.
You don't have to do it, I'm just giving you a heads up that it's happening because you guys had discussed the issue quite a bit.
Oh, so we don't have to approve anything ourselves of it?
Eventually, but not now.
Okay.
When we'll come through, just like, uh, Pete gave you the update on some policy tree stuff. We'll probably do something similar with an update on policy tree, work with natural resources committee, come up with something, um, come to you guys and, um, tell you all about it and then we'll come back with a legislative file.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? Um, uh, I guess I, I should ask, you know, hang on with that gavel.
I'm kidding.
I, I should ask, uh, Mr. Kabeizman again. Should I, on our communication back and forth with Dirk and Chris on that letter, should I be using our city email addresses?
It's city business, yeah, so using the city email addresses makes sense.
Okay, great, all right. Anybody else have anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Tom, you can hit the gavel.
Oh, oh, never mind, take that back.
Take that back. Uh, just, can, can I send, uh, Chair Mitchell just some ideas? He's writing the letter, I just wanted to share some thoughts.
Absolutely, you guys can communicate however you want. Remember that this is all, it'll all be public records.
Understood, thank you.
All right, we're adjourned.
Okay, turn off the AV.